Now, continue, Ryan, you're okay, you're streaming and that is working? Sorry, if, and if anybody... I don't think we're gonna be leaving anytime soon, but I think it's, has dissipated somewhat, I think, but, uh, so we'll move, I'm sorry? It's a dumpster. Uh, so with that, uh, we were at the point of just getting, uh, folks to come up and speak. If you haven't, if there's anyone else who wishes to come make a presentation on this matter, please come forward, state your name, thank you.
My name's Bob Coleman, uh, I'm at 503 14th Street South. Uh, most of what I was going to say has already been said, said, and all of which I agree wholeheartedly. Um, I, I've heard what the, uh, my friends over here have stated, uh, in describing this, these proposed developments, or their proposed development, and it all sounds very cool and progress, progressive and sweet, but you know what? And, and, and I've, I've been a proponent of public transit, public transportation my entire life, and I, and, and, and we need to do what they do in other countries, and we need to take the bus, and we need to, we need to ride our bicycles, and we need to walk, heaven forbid, let's walk, and we, we need to use fewer cars. Look at the news in the morning, and you see the gridlock in Calgary. We, we shouldn't be doing this, not, not just because of the environment, but, uh, because it's just, it's just not the right thing to do. We need to be, we, we need to be more progressive like this development is, but you know what? We're not there, we're not even close to being there, and, and you know that, just, just like I said, because of what you see on TV and, and what you see here, and what you see on 13th Street, as one of the previous speakers described, even in Lethbridge, we have, we have gridlock, everybody drives a vehicle. And, you know, it's, it's well and fine to say, we're aiming at the walkers and the, the people, the no, no car individuals and, and the people that would use public transit and, or bicycles, but where's, what's the guarantee of that? There's no guarantee of that, and guess what? It's not going to happen. So the bottom line is what everybody has been describing here, and I sympathize with, with the business owners, of course, that's a primary concern, 1909 and London Road Market, absolutely, but speaking on behalf of the neighbors, my neighbors, my community, parking is a huge issue, and chances are fabulous that everybody in these 47, 49 unit buildings, and there's more than one of them, it's gonna be two or three, is my understanding, uh, they're gonna have a vehicle, and some of them might have two, and there's no guarantee that will not be the case, and so it has been described to you, and, and they're, they're right, the, the parking, onsite parking is grossly inadequate. And so where are these people going to park? And make no mistake about it, they will be parking on the street, they will be parking in the business people's parking lots, they will be parking in front of our homes, and most of us have old homes, it's an old neighborhood, it's an old community, very old, most of the lots are 35-foot fronts, nobody has a gar, well, people have garages, but not very many, a lot, a lot, a lot of areas in, in Upper Victoria neighborhood don't even have alleys, but with a 35-foot front, there's room for two cars, most of us have two cars, that's where we park. Well, that'll be taken away from, from us with two, two high-rises at 49, uh, tenants, each with a vehicle, some with two vehicles, plus the businesses that are gonna be there? And so, I mean, it's bad enough, right, and not only that, the people in these buildings will have family and friends, as has already been stated, who will be visiting them, as do we, when we have people visiting us now, they have to drive down the block to park. I don't wanna have to drive down the block to park, or, uh, unless my family or friends are here, and what if it's 40 below? I wanna plug my vehicle in, where am I gonna plug my vehicle in? Because most of us, I don't, I have a driveway, but I'm speaking on behalf of my neighbors, most of us park on the street, and we run our extension cords out to the street, not only that, what about security of the vehicle? What about security of our vehicles when we have to park, park a block away? Show me, please, another significant residential development of this magnitude where there are 49 or 47 tenants plus two businesses and 14 parking spots? It doesn't happen, unless it's a seniors-only complex where nobody drives, but that's not the reality, we're not there, we're not even close. This is, this, our, these areas are the wrong areas for these high-rise developments, unless there's onsite parking, most places, most high-rises in Calgary have underground parking, is that being proposed?
Just have you wrap, we're a couple of minutes over right now, but I appreciate your passion here, you just have to make sure you can wrap up, thank you.
Thank you, sir, I'm done.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to make a presentation?
Michelle Walker, and I was just wondering if, um, we talked to the fire department about having this, the building's so high, and I know that I have a nephew that's a firefighter, and they just said, going up the stairs in those buildings, and I know that usually they do, they have the elevators, but if they don't work, if there's an electrical problem and there's a fire, you don't use, use stairs, right? And so it's, I just wondered if you talked to the fire department about the safety, and especially having three of them so close, and we've had some big fires in the last couple of years at senior centers and stuff, so yeah, thank you.
I can appreciate that, uh, and that's a question that we could have, go ahead, Mr.
Hello, my name is Dave McElhaugh, I live at 1237 5A Avenue. My biggest concern is the street itself, I've had six hit-and-runs in front of my house, my wife's and my vehicle, the street is too narrow, we're one feet, excuse me, we're one foot too wide to be a one-way street, so you can't have two lanes of traffic going there, you're gonna double the amount of traffic on the road, there's kids on this street, it is just too small to accommodate that many people, that's it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
Hi, my name's Jim Van Der Zee, I live on 5A Avenue South, um, I heard the developer say that this is a responsible design, I don't think it is for the space that this property is being designed for, it's far too big of a space for that small area, and it's gonna negatively impact our neighborhood, and that was my concerns, I think it's good to do a development there, I just think this proposed one is too big, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wants to make a comment, has, if you've already spoken, sorry, you can't speak again, Mr. Logan. Oh, 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 sorry, you're the previous one, my apologies, Mr. Logan, absolutely you can, I'm sorry. It's been going on for so long, I'm thinking it's the same one, so, go ahead.
It's Darcy Logan, I'll keep this really, really quick, I was sitting in the city planning department yesterday morning, and I asked a city planner, when developers and residents are at odds, who at City Hall is advocating for the residents? And I kinda got like a shrug, we as the community don't have a whole department advocating for us, we're relying on you, city council, to be our voice, to be the community voice in City Hall, so I just hope you appreciate the gravity of everybody that came and, and spoke today, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak, and if you make sure you speak to what we're, we're dealing with, because we do need to make sure that it is a public hearing based on, uh, you know, these two items, the 6416, 6461, so.
Name is Gary Bradbury, I live on 5A, I wasn't going to say anything, but that's a very good comment, because this process here, uh, it's open process, we're all, you know, bringing our discontent here, don't miss, uh, mistake that there is support here for some kind of development on those three lots, like somebody said previously, we all, we purchased here six years ago, and there were three lots, we assumed there would be a development there, but not one of this magnitude. In the presentation, most of the apartment buildings in the area that were shown, they all have adequate parking, the Dillon Tower, the other buildings down the street, they have plenty of parking in, in that area, this does not have the adequate parking. 5A, I live on the west side of 5A, close to 12th Street, far away from this development, but I'm here because of, uh, what will happen to our neighbors up the street, they will lose their, their parking spaces, also because of the businesses, uh, pulling into the store through the back alley, basically, and now we're gonna run another 49 units in there, uh, it's, it's ludicrous to even think that that would happen. Uh, there are a lot of red flags here, this is an open process, um, there's support for development, but there are so many red flags here that if somebody walked in, an objective observer from another city or town came and watched this meeting, they would say, yeah, there's, they gotta take this one back to the drawing board and try again. Since the open house, there hasn't been any new changes proposed that I see, the parking was the issue before, it's still the issue now, and, uh, it is gridlock at the end of 5A, when you, when I drive towards, um, 13th Street, it's gridlock, you know, I cannot pull right on to 13th Street, I have to take my time. And there are also lots of other issues in our neighborhood regarding parking, uh, for example, in the last three weeks, RVs have shown up in our neighborhood, where people who do not have homes are living in RVs on our streets now, uh, from the presentation earlier, I was sure you were going to mention the RVs, because they're moving around the neighborhood, because they, they know the rules, they know the bylaws, so they're moving from locations, uh, close to my home, up to where you live, and then I see them driving across town to Walmart, there are lots of parking issues in our neighborhood that we need to address or to consider here, and, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you. Hi, anyone else that wishes to speak to this, please come to, here.
Hello, uh, honorable city councillors and Mr. Mayor, my name is Kelty Baird, I'm a 17-year resident of Lethbridge, and a local business owner whose business is walkable to the proposed developments on 13th Street. As a local entrepreneur, I'm genuinely excited by all the residential developments proposed today, and one, and one ought never say no to more thirsty neighbors in my line of work. I can appreciate deeply the concerns neighbors have on the impact of, on the area the proposed developments would have, we have heard at some length the concerns about parking and privacy and security, repeated by those opposed, those concerns are certainly valid and should be addressed throughout this process, I'm very glad to see so many people here engaging in this process despite the general tenor of the room, I rise today in support of these projects, for several reasons beyond the economic advantages to my business. Lethbridge is currently experiencing a housing emergency, and these developments address the missing middle of the housing continuum, as a person who is passionate about civic planning, the opportunity for further mixed-use development and more neighborhood-focused commercial enterprise nearby is extremely exciting to me. As someone who walks and bikes exclusively for transportation, or uses transit, as I did today to get here, these developments are extremely attractive to people like me, people my age, people my, in my economic kind of tier, we can't afford both cars and houses, a lot of us, so we have to make that choice about where we live, and living close to amenities like the London Road Market, where I could feasibly from these apartments, go downstairs, buy my groceries, and come back upstairs, that's incredible, and I encourage business owners in this area to think about the over 100 new customers that they could have walking through their door and not driving to their stores. I do have some concerns with the designs of the buildings, and encourage the developers to consider better matching the historical aesthetic of the neighborhoods, I am also curious about the sales models of the units in these developments, as I am anxious that these sales of the units will not be to corporate landlords, and these will become rentals, but rather these units be a stepping stone along the housing continuum, if a councillor could pose this question to the developer, I would appreciate it. With that, I do urge council to approve these developments, continue to invest in public transit and accessibility, and biking infrastructure to help alleviate car dependency and parking congestion issues, as well as support mixed-use, medium-density developments in Lethbridge, as there is no doubt Lethbridge will continue to grow. By allowing these developments, we increase the likelihood of folks moving into and falling in love with the London Road neighborhood, then, as they grow and want to stay in the neighborhood, provide a ready market for current landowners looking to sell, as well as an opportunity for those residents currently in the neighborhood in single-family dwellings to downsize and age in place in the neighborhood they already love. Finally, I do urge those gathered here to consider their support on this matter, and should these proposals be approved, we endeavor to embrace our new neighbors, who are lucky enough to have chosen Lethbridge as their home, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. and Ms. Baird, anyone else who wishes to make a presentation on this?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, my name is Robin James, I'm the CEO of Lethbridge Housing Authority, it was not my intention to come down here and speak to any of you about this project, um, this evening, however, I've been informed that somehow LHA has been thrown around in this mix, so I just wanted to clarify very, very quickly that, A, I have no idea what this is, I am hearing it's medium density, I'm hearing it's, it's 49 units, I, um, we are not involved in the project in any way, shape, or form, we have not been, um, told anything about the project, um, and from a housing continuum's perspective, if they're building some mid and some high-end rental properties, I would really appreciate that, because we need to free up some of that lower-end rental market, lower-cost rental market, in order for my clients to be able to find a place to live. I would assume with who the developer is, this is going to be something funky and fancy, and, and not necessarily a place where my clients will call home, um, but it will allow for my clients to call a different place home, so I hope that, uh, and again, I haven't seen it, I don't know what it looks like, I'm just wanting to confirm to Mayor and Council that this is not in any way affiliated with the Lethbridge Housing Authority, it's not affiliated with our waitlist or anything we do, however, rental properties are very important to be built in this city at some point, we do need to let that happen, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. James. Is there anyone else in the public who wishes to make a presentation, please come forward, state your name.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak, I wasn't going to, I had submitted my letter, uh, my name is Diane Randall, and I live in Upper Victoria Park, I just wanted to reinforce some of the comments that have been, been made, and, um, I, I speak, um, I've spoken to a lot of our neighbors, uh, and about the concerns that they might have about the scalability of the project, it's not, no one is opposed to housing, uh, in any way, but believe that it should be in scale to match that of the cutting company building, the 1909 business, which is at, at three, uh, three stories. So definitely, um, the architectural design, um, also needs to fit, um, in the neighborhood, this is a very historical part of our, of our city, and wanted to make sure, uh, that that did occur, I think a lot has been already said, and I'm not going to repeat any of that, but I think one of the things that would be really helpful is in a collaborative way to work with the neighborhood in the design, and in, in the process, and in, um, and in terms of, of creating something that fits, uh, in the neighborhood. That intersection of 13th Street and 6th Avenue is the gateway into Upper Vic Park, and so we want to send a message about what Upper Vic Park is about, and, um, and whatever is built on that corner is going to have a significant impact in that area, we're very concerned about the lane, um, the back lane traffic that is going to ensue, and, uh, of course, all the rest of the concerns around parking, so the request for a re, is to reconsider and to collaborate with the neighbors, collaborate with the neighborhood, and what the neighborhood's values and design is, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Randall.
Hi, I'll just say something quick, uh, 'cause low-income housing is dear to my heart, having worked in the community with people who, a lot of our issues in the community that, you know, people might be asking home care for are really actually housing issues. We really do need low income, however, I don't think this proposal will meet that need, being that it was only 15%, and I, we're looking at not redeveloping, um, areas, like, we're not, we're not against that, but if we're going to develop areas, we wanna play like the long game, and we wanna keep people in areas that they can afford, a lot of people rent before they wanna buy a house, there is no way someone who's renting an apartment with a bedroom or two is paying the same amount of mortgage I am.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to make a presentation on this? For a second time, is there anyone who else, else who wishes to make a presentation on this matter? And for a third and final time, are there any members of the public wish to make a presentation on this matter? Hearing none, it's now time for city council ask questions of the presenters. I did want to start off with our administration, I'm not sure who could answer this question, but I heard a lot about, um, folks out here, I don't know if they were, uh, experts in the field or not, but saying there's an issue with, uh, fire department, for example, if there's an issue with fires, safety, et cetera, is this the process, I'm sure I know the answer to this, but it's important that those that are concerned with this understand that the process of getting through design stage, et cetera, does address this, is that right to say?
Thank you for the question, Mayor Higgin, uh, so yes, so when we receive a new application for rezoning or statutory plan amendment, we circulate that with, uh, relevant city departments, that does include someone from, um, fire who comments on, uh, applications, and so no, uh, concerns were raised at that time.
And that include, uh, traffic counts, et cetera, if, if that's an issue, if you have that much more, that many more vehicles on that road, excuse me, that is addressed, you have somebody within, uh, transportation that is there as well?
That's correct, we have, yeah, a transportation engineer who reviews, uh, initial applications as well and provides comments, um, and, uh, we do have a, a transportation engineer here today if there's any specific questions on that.
All right, just wanna make sure those folks are around the table, because I was hearing comments, and I just wanted to make sure that there is, safety is, is definitely an important issue, and that is part of it, as well as traffic. and that is part of it, as well as traffic. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Councillor Croson.
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. Mr. Kilgore, one of the things you often talked about when you're in front of us is the hierarchy of plans. So one of the things we're looking at right now is whether or not to allow changes to the London Road area redevelopment plan. We also, though, have plans above it, the municipal development plan, et cetera. And in the hierarchy of plans, which ones go above the London Road area redevelopment plan? Which are the higher plans?
Thank you for the question. The municipal development plan is the highest-level statutory land use plan in the city.
So if that says something about housing, it would actually be more legally appropriate to follow that one than the London Road?
I'd say that's fair to say, yes. And as part of the five-year review of the plan, we will be looking at if anything needs to change to comply with the MDP, because the MDP was adopted after the London Road RP.
And I'm not sure if you can answer this, or Mr. Sanchez. One of the questions we're hearing from a lot of the members of the community is infrastructure. We know we have older infrastructure downtown London Road. If infrastructure had to be improved for a new development, who is financially responsible for the cost of that infrastructure?
The proponent, the developer.
And would they have to bring it up to today's standard if this was approved in any way?
If there's anything they were required to do in terms of improving their service connections and so on, that would be for them to do.
Okay, thank you. I'll step out right now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Higgin, but I probably will have more questions coming in.
Thank you, Councillor Croson. Councillor Schmidt-Rempel.
Thank you very much. So I'll tag-team this with you there, Councillor Croson. To the city manager-designate, what is the rental market vacancy rate right now in our city? Or even in the surrounding area? Do we have the numbers for that?
I have the answers for that. We were actually looking into some of the details. When you look at the city of Lethbridge, for vacancy rate is a provincial number, and that number for 2023 is 2.3% vacancy rate. And that number also is less than what it used to be in 2022 at 2.5 and 2021 at 3.2.
Okay. And then just going along that, just looking for some other stats here, do we have a significant traffic and collision issues on this corner? I'm just wondering what our traffic counts are in that area since that was...
We have here Mr. Sanamand. I don't know if he has the answer to that specifically.
So that was a traffic and collisions?
Yes.
Okay. The collisions, right now, I guess it's in one of our top intersections for collisions. It's scheduled for an intersection safety review this coming year. So it has hit our radar on the collision front. And the other question about traffic, it's a fairly busy intersection, but that's to be expected at the intersection of two arterial roads at 13th and Sixth.
Okay. I will step out for now.
Councillor Palladino.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Half my questions have been answered, but along the same lines as what you were mentioning, when someone comes to us and says, "The water lines are old, and the sewer lines are old, and the power lines are old," how does that get measured in the planning department? Or how do they keep track of that, I guess it is? And the facts?
So I can answer that from the infrastructure point of view. Most of the pipes, the underground infrastructure, it goes through our asset management program. And that asset management program, depending on the pipe's tracks, how many main breaks or water breaks or sewer issues that we have. And we also use a base approach. Depending on the life of the pipe, we typically know what is the expected life. And adding that into the breaks, then that compounds into the information that our team do use in the annual planning when they do their life cycle. And at the same time, they also work with the transportation department in terms of road condition assessment. They do the PQI that's done every year for different areas of the city. And the intent is to try to make that work happen at the same time, so you don't disrupt the road for overlay, and then a year later or two years later, you need to do a life cycle. So again, it's part of the work, and in this case, if there is any need to upgrade or to increase infrastructure needs, Mr. Kilgore explained that very well. It will be part of the developer in order to bring that development into line to cover for those expenses.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Councillor Croson.
If the applicant could come up, please, Mr. Bergen. You've had the chance to listen to the residents and many of the concerns, so let's start with parking. Why the number of parking stalls that you've chosen? Have you considered underground parking, as other people have suggested? What have you to say about the parking, and why have you chosen this amount and not more for the site?
Sure. Thank you for the question. So we did first look at underground parking for the site, and ultimately, it became economically unfeasible. So based on all of our calculations, it basically was going to be about $45,000 per stall as base cost. And so this just became unattainable for the development, and there's no proposal before you today with that. And so what we actually looked at, and I'll pull up my stats here. So one of the pieces that we wanted to understand with the development and the proposed development in particular around parking, recognizing that the parking is very different, or our proposal is different than what is part of the current requirement as per the land use, we actually hired Stantec Transportation to investigate really what these kind of new requirements or what the realities are today prior to development. And ultimately, and this document has been submitted to administration for their transportation engineers' review as well. And the findings of the study related to parking in the adjacent streets for 5A in particular, as well as 13th and then Sixth, it was a total of 102 available spaces, where this is on-street, with a peak occupancy rate of 42%, with 60 unused parking spaces at the peak hours. And this had a maximum radius of 250 meters from the proposed sites, but the reality, based on the report and the findings, that the majority was within 150 meters, so walking distance in a very short period of time, to the development. So based on Stantec's findings, there is more than adequate parking that's on-street based on the overall density that's proposed. And so as we look at this from a holistic affordability perspective, car expenses, so complete car expenses, insurance, fuel, maintenance, lease, or payment options, is becoming unattainable for a lot of young professionals and a lot of young people, as well as people that are choosing to live a different lifestyle. And so this is one piece that we think is quite positive for the Lethbridge Housing Continuum, is choice. There is a lack of housing choice and a lack of lifestyle-based housing choice within mature neighborhoods. So when we did our parking calculations, ultimately, we took all of these factors under consideration and ultimately found a balance of what the land can basically support, what the development can support, and where society truly is going when it comes to holistic affordability.
Now, you understand that what everybody in this audience just heard is that you're going to be relying on, what you said is you're relying on street parking to provide the parking for this.
There's a portion that may be required, correct? And so this is where the residents that we've heard from tonight currently rely on street parking, which is kind of interesting, and also feel like that there's an ownership piece. And so that isn't necessarily true, because these are public streets. And so a renter is not a second-rate citizen. Someone who's new to a neighborhood is not a second-rate citizen. And so ownership on public streets isn't congruent.
No, it's absolutely true. The streets are owned by the city, not by anyone who has a house or rental property there. You've also heard the community's concerns about the size. On this location, how large it is, et cetera. Why this size? Why have you chosen this size of building for this corner or for this road?
Yeah. Thank you for the question. So one of the pieces, I started my presentation off with, was that this is a housing program or a typology. So what we have seen in the London Road and Victoria Park neighborhoods is that there is a certain dimension, there's a certain plot size that is available for this type of development. And so ultimately, all of the development sites proposed tonight are of nearly identical sizes. And so to balance out the development itself with the parking requirements, it just is ultimately part of those constraints that we feel we have pushed all of those constraints to their limits, their reasonable limits, and we feel that we have a product that would actually resonate very, very well in the market.
So it's economic reasons, partly? Okay. All right. Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Sanchez, a question for you right now, that I'm thinking about it. The alley immediately behind these three parcels, who owns that piece of land?
Sorry, you're referring?
So there's an alley that comes in that's going to be right behind these three parcels, or perhaps Mr. Lowen would be better able. Who actually owns that land that you come in off of 5A right behind them?
The city's public.
I'm thinking it's the city that owns that, is it not?
No.
Okay.
Thank you for the question, Councillor Croson. The alley is public.
So the land that's actually right behind the three parcels they're looking at is city-owned land?
Yes, the alleyway that runs north-south to the west of these parcels is...
And is that alleyway all the way between Six and 5A, all that area city-owned?
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Higgin.
Councillor Campbell.
Mr. Farga, could you come up one more time, if you don't mind? In the last presentation as well, I asked the developer, is there a Plan B? If this doesn't go your way, do you have a Plan B? Or is this just, "See you later"? What's the thought there?
Thank you, Councillor, for the question. So as we've reflected on this, because part of the overall proposal and working with administration was to bring this as a little bit more of an omnibus package, because it has a certain societal value by bringing this housing typology together. And that being said, as we've looked at it, because this is a long, someone mentioned a long-term play or the long game, that is something that we are absolutely committed to, recognizing that there's multiple years of requirements here. So when we look at this, we think that without an ability to truly do all of these sites, that there probably isn't a housing development that's going to occur on any of the three sites. One of the pieces that we've learned from and we've tried to incorporate and enhance our development compared to some of the proposals that made it nearly this far, is taking into consideration where we are today and where we're truly, as a city, wanting to go in the future. And so what we see with that is there has to be a structural change. There has to be a different design at the ground-floor level, something that's more integrated to the community. And then as we go above, reflecting where residents truly are wanting their lifestyle in an urban-style neighborhood. It's very different than some of the suburban developments that were previously considered at a high level for some of these plots. This land, at its highest and best use, is this medium-based, medium-density-based development. Without that sort of applied zoning to this, there's no economic feasibility outside of single-family, very wealthy development.
You don't have to answer this necessarily, but I just, did you apply for any government funding for housing? Because there's such, you know, the federal government at least wants a lot of houses built. Did you look into that route at all? And was, did you have any success?
So there's a little bit of chicken and egg.
Right.
We need to own the land first, and we need to actually have approved development plans. And so that's all we have to get through this rezoning piece to then be able to apply for those, for some of the grants. And so ultimately, what we've proposed and what was presented here tonight is around CMHC, the select financing, which we hear in the media. And that's where we're aiming for that 15% affordable, so based on 30% mean average income, rental income. So that's that portion. This is not affordable housing, like we heard from Robin tonight. This is really around hitting some of those CMHC-targeted guidelines, so that we're achieving more elements of the housing continuum. We're actually able to diversify on a site right now that has no inherent diversification available to it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Schmidt-Rempel.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Farga, since you're there, I will ask you a few of the questions I've got. So some of the questions, and going through the letters and everything, I pulled some questions out of those to have you address those. What about the maintenance of the trees? So the trees that are currently on the lots, on the boulevards, where are you at with maintaining the trees?
Thank you for the question. Could I just ask for a follow-up clarification on the term "maintenance"?
Keeping them.
Oh, thank you. So ultimately, we have plans to keep 100% of the trees. They are one of the most prized assets to this development. As I did mention in the presentation, they have not just only ecological value, but they have placemaking value. They have architectural screening value. They have four seasons' value to the residents and to the neighborhood. So we are 100% committed to those trees. We've spoken with administration and the forestry unit to understand what it really looks like when it comes to development, how we protect the trees, are there trees that are problem trees, because those do exist in the city as well. And so we have a high-level understanding based on our conversations with administration for the intention to keep 100% of those trees.
Okay. Next, then, is shadow casting and privacy. What's being done to accommodate concerns around shadow casting and privacy when you look at the garden, the rooftop patio, looking into other people's lots? And then, of course, the shadow casting, what's being done to accommodate and deal with that?
Thank you for the question. So each is site-specific, and we've worked with administration on the bylaws, and they are reflective there. So the first piece that we have done is stepped the building back four meters from certain setbacks. And so what that is ultimately doing is decreasing or decreasing the height of the building, so down to three stories, which is integrating more congruently with the adjacent neighbors. And that is also decreasing the shadows. So we have conducted one comprehensive shadow study, which has been submitted to administration to date. And if we were to advance past this evening, ultimately, all shadow studies would be done as per the overall development permit application requirements. And so what we have done is we've worked with neighbors one-on-one as required. So we heard from the neighborhood from 533. And so ultimately, where we placed the building was a direct, so the setbacks actually in relationship to the property line, was in direct correlation to minimize the shadows. And so those shadow studies have been submitted also to the resident to understand what it looks like in all seasons. I do have an image that I can bring up in a future presentation, as we're going to be doing this again here shortly. And I can walk council through what the proposed shadows are going to look like throughout the high and the low ports of the year. Additionally, from a privacy perspective, we actually relocated the proposed rooftop patio to stay away from the neighbors, so keeping it as far away as possible. And what we see is basically putting the energy of the rooftop away and then towards the street, so that that actually is more of a congruent use.
Okay. Is there anybody, can I do one more, and then I'll pop out? Length of construction? We've got some questions around the length of construction, the disruption to the neighborhood and the community. What are you looking at as far as length of construction goes? How long would that disruption last?
Good question. Thank you. So as of right now, based on our preliminary schedule, it's looking about 14 to 16 months of construction. And so that's full end-to-end construction.
Okay. I will step out. For now.
Councillor Croson.
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. So you've heard the concerns also of the businesses in that area. You know, a trailer has to come in there so that they can unload things for London Road. Would your design in any way block those alleys, which, again, are city-owned property, that would stop the semi from coming in?
Because we don't own that lane, there's no way that we would be able to encroach on it. So I don't understand how we would have any sort of negative impact on any sort of circulation of that trailer going north-south.
And if this moves ahead and you build it, are these rental properties or are they sold? And I ask this not because I care which you choose, but if it's rental properties, how would you manage the parking to ensure they're not parking on other people's property? What kind of landlord behavior would you have, basically?
Well, hopefully, the landlord would behave well. So good question. And this was a very important topic of conversation at our second open house in particular. And many residents are here in the room today whom we spoke to about this, and we have had additional conversation as well. So I'll kind of draw the bounds to the site itself. So ultimately, we are responsible for the management of our property, just as the business owners are responsible for their property. And so we want to respect and appreciate that positive division. However, a good neighbor policy is something that we've been talking about, and from a property management perspective, is something that we maintain and expect. So that being said, because there's a certain fluency that we've seen in the images tonight around in this particular area with the lane, and we're not interested in any form of encroachment on that, however, there would basically be absolute rules that would be abiding by for the residents within the parking. And then anything beyond that, in some ways, adults have to make... And then anything beyond that, in some ways, adults have to make adult-based decisions, and there's certain ramifications that come along with that. However, being a good neighbor as an owner, we would be working with the adjacent property owner to make sure that the enforcement is appropriate, that communication is positive, and that ultimately, people are doing what they're supposed to do as good residents of Lethbridge. So we know that this is a big deal, and we're not interested in, you know, making anything more strenuous. We see the opportunity for densification and bringing potential customers right to the door of adjacent businesses as a really positive piece that doesn't have an opportunity, you know, until now. So we see that as a good neighbor contribution. And the parking piece is, we can tell, parking is parking in any Canadian city. So how are we going to go about doing that? It's going to be through active management, good policy, and then continuing to, you know, levy things where required.
Okay, thank you. I have no questions for you right now, so I'm going to ask some of the city staff. If you want to have a seat, I'm not sure if you're becoming backup or not. Question to you, Mr. Brower, or to one of your designate. I have a bit of a concern when I'm hearing about the RVs parking in this neighborhood and that we might not be doing parking management in this area. Has any of that come across your desk? Are we hearing any of these concerns? And if so, do we have any plan for this?
So I can probably speak to that. And as I hear this, I made a note, I'm going to ask our 311 department. I'm not aware of any issues. And we always tell people when that happens, they can either call Parking Enforcement or 311, so we can document and keep a record of this. Typically, we, our staff, we have limited resources when it comes to enforcement. So it's not that they are in one particular area all the time, they rotate across the city. And when we get these calls, we go there and we just act upon whatever the concern is. So we are going to review this and make sure Phil was here, he needed to leave home, but I will chat with him and do a follow-up, because, again, as I said before, I'm not aware of this being a concern, or at least it could be myself, I'm just going to do a little bit more digging on it.
So it's not really a question, but a reminder to the community that they need to call 911, or 911, 311, so we can track that and actually develop a better plan for that if it's happening on an ongoing basis.
That's 100% correct. We want to have that information, because if we don't know, it's hard to act on those concerns. So please call 311, and in that way, we can create a service request, and then we can get the stats in order to make informed decisions.
And this, again, is more my answer than that. Maybe the city should be looking at another campground in the city, but that's just me, you don't have to answer that. All right, thank you, Mayor Hagan.
Thank you, Counselor Schmidt-Rempel.
Thank you very much. To the city manager-designate, what's the annual tax return on these developments to the city after these developments are built and the tax cancellation has expired?
Thank you, Counselor Schmidt-Rempel. Let me just bring that up here. So on one of the properties, which is 524 13th Street South, from the information I have, the total, so I'll give you the yearly piece here right now. So currently, municipal tax is around $3,600 on that property. After development, it's estimated to be around $62,000. The total 20-year amount for municipal tax differential would be closer to just under $900,000 for that property. For the five, let me just make sure I got the dates or the address here correct. For 543 13th Street South, currently, similarly, it's around $3,300, just over $3,300 for municipal taxes. After development, it's around $89,500 with, after 20 years, around $1.3 million in taxes collected.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Matthews. To the city manager-to-designate, which I'm going to assume might be Mr. Sanchez. I see in some of the letters, there are residents who are concerned about construction damage to their homes that are there. So we've got a lot of old homes, a lot of older foundations. How do we mitigate those concerns? Is there anything the city can do to mitigate those concerns? What should the developer be watching for when they're undergoing construction? That sort of thing. Where does that fall?
So I will start, and I don't know if Mrs. Gering has anything to add, but typically, I'm going to think about this through the development permit process. Once this is approved, a development permit will occur. And that only has some guidelines in terms of what is being built. It's mostly the responsibility of the developer to ensure that their work side or construction side meets all the needs and the OEHNS and the construction requirements in order to not affect others. If there is anything that is not within our approvals or the design, we will for sure act upon that. Or if there is a specific concern, that will also be directed through 311. Again, residents can express that concern, and we can then redirect that to the appropriate department. But I don't know if there is anything else that I'm missing. Mrs. Gering can probably mention from the DP side, too.
So occasionally, when we've had infill development, we have run across issues with neighboring foundations. I think it's important for neighbors to document if, like, how their foundations are before construction, and then if there's any changes afterwards. It's pretty hard to sort of, after something is built, to say this was caused by the construction, right? Certainly, our building inspections department does do inspections at foundation stage for these multifamily developments. So they'll be ensuring that everything they've done on their site is appropriate. But yeah, I would suggest that homeowners understand what their own property looks like beforehand, and just take some pictures to ensure if there's any follow-up that's needed after the fact. Okay, thank you very much. And then again, to the city manager-designate, what are our housing starts in Lethbridge this year compared to what they were at last year at this time? See Mr. Sanchez on that?
Yeah, so I do have that information. So when we look at the housing starts, so far to date, 2024, we have 190 housing starts compared to 371 in 2023. So pretty much half of the numbers that we had the year before. And if you compare that number to 2022, in 2022 was 569 housing starts. So we are down probably a third of what it used to be in 2022.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all the questions I have for now.
Thank you. I do have a question. I was, as I was listening to folks talk about some of their concerns. I know Ms. Randall, I don't know if Ms. Randall's still here. Oh, yes. Ms. Randall, I just had a question, if I could, for you, because I didn't get it down right. I didn't know if you were in favor of the project or not in favor of the housing.
Thank you very much for the question. Certainly not opposed to development on that corner. It was the, it has an issue to do with the scalability and the issues that I've identified, also the design and the entrance to Upper Vic Park.
So the area where it's at, not the project?
No, not the project. It's the scalability, it's the height.
Oh, so you would prefer, you would like to have a lot of housing there, but just not the height?
Absolutely. I'm in favor of housing initiatives, and certainly not, has nothing to do with the housing being on that site. It has to do with all the other factors and the implications on the neighborhood.
So height being the main thing, is that fair? So if it was half the height there and 50, or what is it?
Yes.
25 houses, that'd be okay, 25 apartments?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to find out. Thank you.
No problem.
Appreciate it.
Counselor Croson.
Thank you, Mayor Hagan. I'm not sure who can answer this, but perhaps Mr. Kilgore. There's been some concerns about density. So we've heard things from residents that density creates safety concerns, that, you know, there's going to be problems. I think people in the rural area would be surprised, because they see density as actually causing the opposite problem, because rural crime is up. But what do we have around density? Do we see more crime just with added density? Or is it the type of housing? What does the research show around density and increased people and crime, or anything like that?
Thank you for the question, Counselor. So obviously, it's a complex issue, but in general terms, having more people in an area, more eyes on the street, looking out for each other can lead to safety improvements. So if you've got, for example, a development that doesn't have windows facing out onto the street, there's potentially less people looking out for you if you're walking home late at night. So in that sense, having more homes here could improve safety. And I'm not aware of any explicit link between particular levels of density versus safety.
It's mostly how, how it's constructed, what it is, the use, than just density on its own?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor Hagan.
Counselor Schmidt-Rempel.
Thank you very much. And, Mr. Farga, could I have you please come forward? So just in regards to the questions that we have had with regards to the size of these buildings, why six stories and not three, four, or five, as the comparators that you've given us show?
Thank you for the question. And just to be clear, our proposal, as presented tonight, is five stories. The bylaw is up to six. And so we've ultimately, economic reasons, this is the balance, especially with the step-back, so cutting that portion of the building down to three stories for that step-back ultimately requires the rest of the building to stay up at five. And so we were at six when we heard about the, you know, basically from the community around it. We were comfortable, it made economic sense at five, it made economic sense at six, it does not make economic sense at four.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, I see no further questions in the queue, or any of my colleagues. I think we're all right. Questions, so hearing, oh, no other questions? I just sometimes wonder what planet I'm on here lately, but hearing none, I now declare the public hearing closed. This matter may be decided later this afternoon, following the public hearing. We're going to take a break for 15 minutes, 20 minutes, is that fine? 15 to 20 minutes, all right? And we'll be back shortly before 7 o'clock. Thank you. Thank you.[161.87]
Counselor Parker, sound check.
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
All right, we'll continue on here in Counselor Parker. This is, if you'll notice in your agenda, land use bylaw for 537, 539, 543 and 13th, 543, 13th Street South. So all this is a different one. Is it, I know you're in conflict on the one.
This is close, though. Yeah, this is right by London Road, am I correct?
This, 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 this particular one here is the 537. The last ones. This is the one that's across the street from, from London Road.
Yeah, so yes, I am. I'm going to, yeah. Anything in that perimeter, 60 meter perimeter, I'm not going to partake in, just so you know.
Okay, so would you like me to send you an email when we're done these ones then?
Yes, please, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Bylaw 6462, land use bylaw amendment. Prior, is there anybody else who has a conflict? I should ask that first because it seems to be a, we're okay, all right. Regarding 537, 539 and 543, 13th Street South, I call to order the public hearing. Land use bylaw amendment 537, 539, 543, 13th Street South. The procedure will, for this hearing will be, will begin by hearing Ross Kilgar, senior community planner, to provide background to the case. Anyone who else, who wishes to speak to this bylaw will then be called upon. We'll ask three times if there's anyone in the public that wishes to make a presentation on the matter. And after that, the hearing will be, counsel will have the opportunity to ask questions, and then the hearing will be closed. Consideration of second, third reading will be made by city council immediately following the public hearing. So with that, call Mr. Ross Kilgar to provide the background to the case. Mr. Kilgar.
Thank you, Mayor Hicken. So very similar to the last public hearing, the applicant is the same. The main difference between this and the last presentation is that there's just one bylaw being presented here because this site is not in the London Road neighborhood, so it does not have an aerial redevelopment plan currently. So bylaw 6462 is just a rezoning application and is proposed to rezone the three subject parcels from an existing direct control bylaw to a new direct control bylaw to facilitate building up to a maximum of 21 meters in height and up to 49 apartments or 47 apartments with commercial uses on the main floor. You can see here the location in the left image on the edge of the Victoria Park neighborhood, and on the right, we can see the aerial photograph with the parcels highlighted in the green dashed line on the corner of Sixth Ave and 13th Street South. Here's an aerial image from the east facing west. And here's a site photo from the southwest corner of the parcel facing northeast. So you can see the parcels are currently vacant. This is essentially the same location, just a little further north to the interior of the site. And this is from the northwest corner facing southeast. You can see the, the bus stop on 13th Street South in the foreground and the site in the background. So these parcels have been vacant since 2022 when the previous single detached dwellings, three single detached dwellings were demolished. We have had numerous inquiries about these parcels over the last few years, even before the previous homes were demolished. The proposed bylaw would rezone them to new direct control land use districts as our standard land use districts in land use bylaw were not suitable for the proposed development. So here we see the existing and proposed zoning side by side. Again, it's direct control from the existing and the proposed. And then in the surrounding area, we can see direct control on the corners of Sixth Ave and 13th Street South to the southeast and southwest. And then London Road Market is local commercial. So looking at the site a little bit closer, the site is surrounded on three sides by public right of way. So we have Sixth Ave and 13th Street are both arterial roadways. Then we have a public laneway to the east of the site. And then to the north of the site are a number of low density residential parcels with detached homes on them. This is quite a good site generally for intensification due to the location on arterial roadways. And we have seen previous attempts to redevelop the site where perhaps lower density types of development were not sufficient to make the site work. This is demonstrating the accessibility of this location to other uses in terms of walking and cycling. So there are a number of employment locations, downtown civic uses, businesses in the warehouse districts, they're all within a reasonable walk or cycle. There are also numerous transit stops in the area. And the proposed direct control bylaw is based on the R200 high density residential district in terms of the residential uses that are allowed and the neighborhood commercial district in terms of the commercial uses with the exceptions from those shown in the table. So the direct control bylaw would require a minimum of 14 regular parking stalls and two barrier free stalls, as well as regular bicycle parking requirements. The setbacks are 1.2 meters other than the 7.6 meters on the east side so that the parking could be accessed from the lane. And then a minimum step back is required above third floor level from the north parcel line. And so that is to achieve a step down to the low density residential homes to the north. There's also a rule saying that that step back or the roof of that step back cannot be used as outdoor amenity space to make sure that there aren't people on an outdoor patio on top of that step back looking into adjacent yards. The signs rules would ensure that there aren't obtrusive signs interfering with the, the nature of the area. And any commercial uses on the main floor would need to be oriented to either 13th Street South or Sixth Ave South, again, to protect the residential neighborhood to the, to the north. So the proposed rezoning is in line with relevant policies in the South Saskatchewan regional plan and the municipal development plan as detailed in the report. The applicant hand delivered invitations to an open house that they held on July 10th to addresses within 60 meters of subject parcels. They also held a second open house on November 6th that 25 people attended. And the proposed amendment's been reviewed by city staff and no servicing issues have been identified. The public hearing was advertised on the city website and in the Herald. We sent our usual initial application notification letter as well as a second one in October when the applicant updated their plans. And then with the Canada Post strike, we hand delivered letters to the property shown in the image as well as placing a freestanding sign on the site. So I received numerous emails and calls about the proposals and they raised concerns about increased vehicle traffic, effects on on-street parking, effects on city infrastructure, overshadowing amenity space and lack of green space. So in conclusion, the proposed rezoning complies with relevant policies in the SSRP and MDP. And so planning and design supports the proposed rezoning and recommends the city council consider the report as information for the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kilgar. Next, we have the applicant Scott Varga and Kandak Hachikowski, if you all come up for a presentation.
Good evening again, thank you. My name is Scott Varga and I'm going to succinctly present upon and build upon the previous presentation that we had earlier this evening and kind of focus in on a couple of key areas and make sure that we're able to have a robust discussion as well. So as previously presented, Neighborhood Block is a housing program that is economically dependent upon similar site dimensions being three lots. And so to create that appropriate building size and unit count and construction cost, that really is the major constraint, the three lots. So the strength of the development exists in its medium density scale and building design. And that is flexible enough to integrate with the neighborhood, prioritizing privacy, reduce shadowing and mature tree retention, regardless of which site we are discussing. And so for tonight, for this second presentation, what I really would like to focus in on is the shadowing study that we talked about. And so really, what we are showing here and what administration has a full presentation slide on is really looking at where the building steps down, how the shadow does or does not impact neighbors. And this is really what we've, we've been, we've shown to, to the neighbor at 533 and had good, robust discussion on. And so what we see, if counsel can squint, basically 533 is the northern portion next to the site. And that the, then the backyard is really only impacted in the, in the, in September 21st in the afternoon where the rest of the year, especially the high point, there's, there's no degradation of sunlight in the backyard, which we're proud of, which we think we, by working with the neighbor in particular, we were able to achieve this balance. And then by stepping that building and then removing and putting the rooftop patio towards the corner is just going to be best for privacy. And so again, this design, if, you know, approved tonight, will follow all the bylaw requirements as per Mr. Kilgar's presentation tonight. And so I just would like to go over, you know, again, the key features of the building is really around 39 residential units with 85% market housing and 15% designated as affordable under the CMHC guidelines. And so this five-story building is complete with the modern amenities that's designed for urban lifestyles. And so that's including the rooftop patio and the gardening spaces, as well as the games room, co-working area in the library, as well as secured interior bicycle parking for active transportation. So with the concerns that we heard are the exact same elements around parking, infrastructure and density. And so we have taken all of those three major themes, which we've heard here tonight as well, integrated them into the design of this site. And we feel that we are achieving and being able to mitigate the majority of those very, very reasonably. And so again, with the development at, or with this development in the neighbor at 533, we had direct and positive engagement, making sure that we understand, so that the resident understands what the potential impact could be, understanding where the mitigating factors are, and then us understanding and appreciating who our neighbors are. So I'm going to leave it there because the rest of the presentation is otherwise thematically the same, but I'm happy to answer any questions from counsel.
Thank you again, Mr. Varga. Appreciate that presentation and update. I will go through now with the registered speakers and then we'll call after that to anyone who is not registered and would like to come up and speak, so. So Mr. Ryan Phillips.
Ryan Phillips, as you said, I want to talk about parking. No, I'm not actually going to. But I would like to echo the concerns raised previously around parking. So I guess I'll focus more on a couple items that were brought up, but maybe with less attention. So I guess my big concern would be around safety on that intersection. As your own traffic department mentioned, that is a very high collision intersection. It's also one of fairly poor sightlines, especially the London Road Market corner there. So since the setbacks for this building are similar to that, I have concerns around visibility at that intersection, especially for pedestrians. Vehicles turning from Sixth onto 13th, westbound onto northbound there. Frequently, there are people that are near missed there, so that's one of my concerns as well. I also have concern about the laneway that kind of runs just east of 13th Street behind the development. There's a T-intersection at the, kind of the north end of that, and then it dumps it on the Sixth Avenue there. There's a, there's two blind corners there are quite dangerous. I should mention, I live at 522 14th Street, so I'm on that laneway there. There's also a number of parking, parking pads and garages where there's blind corners and blind exits there as well, so it can be quite a busy alley. So I'm concerned about the amount of traffic that this development would see increased in that space there. Just a couple notes to Mr. Varga's comments. So he mentioned that the resident at 533 kind of favorably received their, their consultation of note. She was here tonight opposing that development, this development, right? She did speak earlier. And I'm also curious why, if the proposal is for five stories and 39 units, as he just said, why is the bylaw amendment applying for up to six stories and 47 to 49 units? So that's all I have for me, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mr. Phillips. Sandra Beckner. Is here. And Sandra had spoke on, on the previous one. I would probably take it it'd be very similar questions, concerns and that were heard in the first. Mr. David Gura, I'm sure is probably the same, but welcome to speak again, David. He's not okay. And Mr. Dwayne? You're fine, all right. All right. And with that, does anyone in the public wish to make a presentation? Please come forward and state your name.
My name, my name is John Easton. I live on Sixth Avenue South between 12th and 13th. One of the other concerns that hasn't been mentioned is our, is our back alley. Our back alley is a T-intersection at 12th. And then it heads right into the parking lot of London Road Market. And it's, it's almost an arterial road. We have two guys coming to pick up the garbage. We don't have automatic, the alley is so narrow that we have to have two fellows instead of the truck picking up our garbage. I just want to reiterate some of the other matters we have, that the density, the parking. We have very old infrastructure in our neighborhood. I've been there for almost 30 years. Electricity hasn't been ever looked at. And also sewage, large buildings like this, you're going to need new sewage lines probably to head to the, head to the recycling area. And also the intersection of 12th and 13th, or sorry, Sixth Avenue and 13th Street. And also, one of the areas of concern is at London Road Market, the people come around the corner there and there's also parking on London Road Market curb and the entrance. And I've seen many very close accidents on that corner, people pulling out, trying to make a left turn or, and end up making a right turn on that corner. So I think just density problems is the only thing I have. And the parking is two things that I have real concerns about. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the public who wish to make a, okay, please come forward to state your name?
Good evening, I'm Lorna Peacock, and I live on Seventh Avenue South. I'm in the Victoria Park area, and all my friends have gone home. But I just, first of all, I want to apologize in advance. We are at the diversion of Seventh Avenue and 18th Street on Bicycle Boulevard. There was a point where we were all involved in that process and we were offered a flower garden in the diversion. Well, there isn't one, and that's okay. But the problem, the reason why there was not a flower garden was because there wasn't sufficient room to build one and do the diversion. a flower garden was because there wasn't sufficient room to build one and do the diversion. So now, we had a home sell, back in 2016, where the people wanted a driveway. And there are no driveways on the north side of Seventh Avenue, or there were not. The city had demanded that the owner of the property quit driving across the curb onto his front lawn, onto the front, but that was never, that was never, never brought to fruition. So the, the property changed hands one year ago, and now there is a driveway there. But someone forgot to measure what size of a vehicle he would be parking on that driveway. The city crews, the tree crews came and they measured diligently, spent hours and days trying to figure out what size of driveway could happen there. And so it's in the process now, but the parking, the vehicle that's being parked on the driveway is a three-quarter ton truck with wheels this large, and it's going over both sides of the driveway. So my question is about the decisions that are made. Are they good ones? I'm not sure, and that's why I'm here speaking out tonight. Bicycle Boulevard is a blessing in disguise. I love it. We have traffic coming by and people, wheelchairs going down the middle of the road, and it's, it's been, it's a beautiful place to live. And so we want everyone to love where you live, and I think this proposal for this development is going to change that for my neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peacock, and thank you for weathering that storm. I know you were here right at the very beginning and to get up and speak here now, thank you for, for waiting all of this time.
Home and came back. I had some real estate to do.
Oh, you did go, you shouldn't have told me that. Thank you, Ms. Peacock.
Someone was waiting for a conditional offer, that was critical.
Oh, thank you. Alright, is there anyone else from the public who wish to make a presentation on this?
Sorry, hi, I just wanted to reiterate, this is not a Lethbridge housing project, but I just heard the 15% affordability of the CMHC, which makes me very, very excited. I'd just like to remind councilors the importance of the housing continuum. I have friends in the audience that live in this neighborhood that are speaking against it, and I absolutely understand what they're saying. We need rental property in the city of Lethbridge desperately to satisfy the housing continuum. So I hope that somehow, some way, these projects that are proposed, whether they're going to be this scope and magnitude or whatever they look like, we need rental properties in order to move people through a housing continuum. We are seeing more and more thirty-somethings, even into their early forties, that are not homeowners, that are not interested in being homeowners, they're home renters. They rent apartments, they travel, they go places. We're not seeing those same young people staying in jobs like we used to see. It's a completely different environment than buying your home and staying in your home for 20 or 30 or 40 years. My husband and I live directly downtown. We live across from the next proposed development, which I will come up and speak hugely in favor of. I can't wait for more development to be in the downtown core. It's brilliant, it's fantastic, it'll make our, our area vibrant. That's the Fifth Street property I'm thrilled about. But councilors, please keep in mind, as you make decisions, that rental property is something that we are very much in short supply, and this will allow people to transition into those newer properties, which will free up the properties owned by the avenue livings and the main streets of the world. The clients that we're serving that are on income support are living off of $843 a month. So they'll never be able to afford to live in these properties. That's what the income support amount is for an individual. So if we can free up, and we can, we can free up more of the rental market and create more rental stock, that will help drive prices to where a place where clients that we're serving can, you know, hopefully enter into that rental market and transition through. And I understand this will not be a project that will service that client base, but it will help transition the current renters into these new dwellings and open up the old dwellings. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. James. Is there anyone else who wish to make a presentation on this? Alright.
Your worship, I, I think for all intents and purposes, this proposed application is basically the same as the last. I suspect that's why a lot of people have left. So I'm not going to reiterate all of my previous very real and valid concerns about these proposed developments. But I would like to just mention briefly, very briefly, sir, the issue of parking. I heard the proposed developer say quite accurately that there is no private property on a public street. Goes without saying, we all know that's true. So what I also heard him say in the same breath, by implication, that they do not respect the implied right of individuals to park in front of their own residents. And so therefore, yes, they need to park on the street, and they will park wherever they want to. Having said that, I, I agree. We need low-cost housing, your worship. We, we, more in this, in this city, everywhere in this country, without a doubt. But with all due respect, these are the wrong locations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the public that wishes to make a presentation? Please.
Hi, Brenda McDonald. I just want to reiterate my presentation from previously, and I just want to say that I agree with everybody. It's so dense there, what you're proposing, it's such a busy street, the corner of Sixth and 13th. It's too big of a project for that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to make a presentation? For a second time, anyone in the public who wish to make a presentation? And for a third and final time, is there anyone else in the public who wished to make a presentation on this matter? Hearing all the presenters, it's now time for City Council to ask questions of the presenters. And I'd like to start off with Administration. It's going to be a similar question I had on the other. I'm sure I know what the reply is, but I'd sure appreciate it being said again. When this project is, is looked at, as far as it's too busy on a street, we hear that, we hear all of the, the different concerns, can you please confirm to me that experts look at this, traffic counts, safety, and everything for the areas that they're, they're in?
Thank you for the question, Mayor Higgin. Yes, that's correct. Whenever we get a new application, we circulate it with many different city departments and get comments back from them, and work with the applicant to resolve any issues. And so there weren't any showstopping issues for this proposal.
Okay. Thank you. Councilor Croson?
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. Mr. Kilgore, you might be able to answer this, or if not, part of the planning team. We've been talking a lot about parking, and we would be really looking here at not having the parking minimums that people are used to. Can you talk to me about why are so many communities getting rid of parking minimums? And how do parking minimums, or not having parking minimums, affect the house, the price of housing? So what's the role between housing and parking?
Thank you for the question, councillor. So certainly, the more parking that we require as a minimum, the more land any development is likely to take up, and so that has some cost implications. There's the, the cost simply of providing the parking itself. Surface parking is cheaper than structured parking, but it's certainly not free, and it still adds a cost to any home. There's also the opportunity cost of what the land could have been used for more productively. So parking doesn't generally produce much economic good in itself versus being used for something more productive. Certainly, we've seen in recent years, various cities across North America and wider start to reduce or remove minimum parking requirements. So in, in Canada, in the last few years, we've seen Medicine Hat, High River, Saskatoon, Edmonton, Vancouver, Toronto, all remove minimum parking requirements. And so essentially, essentially, they're leaving that up to the market to decide how much parking to provide, much like we leave it up to the market to decide what to put in a home, how many bedrooms, and so on. So it's that same approach of saying the market knows what people want to buy, and it's up to them to take that risk with their proposed development. So in this case, obviously, we're not saying that. We are requiring a minimum parking provision of 12 regular stalls and two barrier-free stalls, as well as cycle parking.
From what I have read, and perhaps you can confirm this or not, that if you want to support getting more housing, one of the best things a community can do is look at parking. Is that accurate?
I would agree. Thank you.
Okay. And the other thing is, people are worried about the location of this, you know, it's the gateway, it's the access, but when I sit through, and it can be anything from transit meetings to housing meetings, we're seeing more high-density housing on outskirts of neighborhoods along transit routes. What's the benefit of doing that?
So, having more people living along key corridors that have amenities like transit stops or bike lanes or alternatives to the private car, make it more likely that you're going to take some cars off the street, at least for some trips. Obviously, people may still own the same number of cars, but even if they're using them for fewer trips, even certain times a year, that's, that's freeing up more road space for other people who still want to drive. So it's a kind of a win-win situation. If you were to put the same number of apartments that we're talking about here further out of town, likely what you'd see is greater congestion on the roads because you're more likely to be using your, your car more often for more trips. In this location, you're at least likely to see some of those trips replaced by walking or cycling or transit.
Okay, and also connected to parking, if places are getting rid of parking minimums, are we seeing any best practices for how to have neighbors work with each other around parking? Because I hear so many things about, you know, people's arguments and fights with their neighbors over parking, and you know, getting notes on your window and all that. Parking is probably one of the biggest frustrations out there between neighbors. So if communities are getting rid of parking minimums, what are the best practices for having neighbors actually work together around parking?
That's a great question, councillor. I'm not sure if there's an easy answer, but there's certainly different options. For example, it is possible to create a residence parking zone in Lethbridge. I believe it needs a majority vote of the, the block facing question, so that is an option that would be open to nearby residents if they're concerned about that. With our current rules, I believe that residence parking zones, that they're not, the permits are not available to residents of apartments. So that's, that's something that could be an option. But other than that, I think it's up to each individual to kind of react to the requirements that are in place or the restrictions that are in place. If on-street parking becomes more scarce to existing residents, then you may some, see some people start to do some things differently, like park in their, their off-street parking that they have, or create new off-street parking for themselves off the alley or, or off the street. This particular location, being in Victoria Park, there's no restrictions in terms of creating new front driveways, but in the surrounding blocks, getting over into the London Road side, there are some blocks where the rear lanes are narrow enough that you are actually allowed to install new front parking as well, so that could be another option for people.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Higgin.
Thank you. I see no further questions in the queue, just want to make sure. Colleagues, last chance. Alright. With that hearing done, I now declare this public hearing closed. This matter may be decided later this af, well, this evening following the public hearing. Or tomorrow morning, yeah. Alright, moving on to bylaw 6464 and 6465. I call, order the public hearing of bylaw 6464, Amendment to London Road Area Redevelopment Plan Regarding 605 Fifth Street South and 510 Sixth Avenue South, and bylaw 6465, Land Use Bylaw Amendment Regarding 605 Fifth Street South and 510 Sixth Avenue South. In accordance with Section 692.2 of the Municipal Government Act, there will be one presentation for both bylaws, as bylaw 6465 is dependent upon bylaw 6464. The procedure for this hearing will be, we'll begin by calling on Mr. Ross Kilgore, Senior Community Planner, to provide a background to the case. Anyone else who wish to speak to either of these bylaws will then be called upon. We'll ask three times if there's anyone else who wish to make a presentation, and then of course, following that, City Council will have the opportunity to ask questions of the presenters, and then the hearing will be closed. And then the consideration of second and third reading will be made by City Council immediately following the public hearing. So with that, I'll call on Mr. Kilgore to provide the background to the case. Mr. Kilgore?
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. So, similar to the first presentation this afternoon, bylaw 6464 would amend the London Road Area Redevelopment Plan, and bylaw 6465 is rezoning, and these are both for the same site. So bylaw 6464, the applicant is again, Somis, and similarly to the previous presentations, this ERP amendment would allow building up to 21 meters in height maximum and remove the requirement to pay redevelopment levy. And bylaw 6465 would rezone the site from direct control to a new direct control district. And again, this would allow the maximum building height of 21 meters and up to 49 apartments or 47 apartments with commercial on the main floor. The amendment location is shown in the image on the left, on the northern edge of the London Road neighborhood, very close to downtown. And the image on the right, we can see the, the three parcels highlighted with the green dashed line. So I'll just highlight that the site is again surrounded on three sides by public right-of-way. So on the east, there is a public alley. To the north, there's Sixth Avenue South and arterial road, and to the west is Fifth Street South, a local road. I'll note as well that 512 and 514 Sixth Ave South, just to the east of the site, are currently in use as a parking lot, as you can see. And then some bleak aerial imagery, so this is from the south facing north, so you can see the edge of downtown, just north of Sixth Ave South. And then from the northeast corner, you can see an existing building on the site, which was the former Alberta Meat Market building, that would be demolished as part of this redevelopment. This is from the southeast corner on that public alley, facing northwest into the interior of the site. And from the southwest facing northeast, so you can see the Alberta Meat Market building in the background, and the vacant remainder of the site in the foreground. And from the northwest corner facing southeast, just into the interior of the site. So as mentioned, the existing and proposed land use district here, so you can see, the site is a mixture of R37 medium-density residential and direct control, and then a direct control district is proposed. To the north, we have downtown commercial zoning, and to the south and east, we have So bylaw 6464, as mentioned, would be an ERP amendment, and that would make two main changes to the plan, one to allow building up to 21 meters maximum, and one to remove the requirement to pay the redevelopment levy. So the vision for this location in London Road is quoted on the slide, so this is the Sixth Avenue South corridor. The first two paragraphs from the vision here would support the proposed development, and the last paragraph shown is proposed to be changed, excuse me, the second paragraph is proposed to be changed, so you can see the change in red here, so making an exception for these two parcels. So this is slightly different from the, the first presentation this evening. The current policy for this location allows building up to four stories in height. So the, again, the site is surrounded on three sides by public right-of-way, is on a busy arterial road close to Whip Up Drive. We have seen previous developers look at this site, but nothing's come forward this far to a rezoning application. It is a highly accessible location, again, very close to downtown, with close access to schools and parks and Civic Block. And again, it's proposed to remove the requirement to pay the redevelopment levy. For this site, the redevelopment levy would be $69,000, again, payable at development permit stage. And again, the ERP does make provision for potentially changing the plan if necessary. And as covered in previous presentation, the redevelopment levy money is collected, may only be used for a narrow range of purposes, i.e. purchasing land. i.e. purchasing land for a park or recreation facility or both. So turning now to bylaw 6465, the proposed new direct control district. Again, this is based on R-200 and neighborhood commercial, with the exceptions shown in the table. On this site, a minimum of eight regular parking spaces would be required and two barrier-free parking spaces, as well as bicycle parking. The setbacks here are 1.2 meters, other than for the south side, adjacent to an existing house to the south. There, the minimum setback would be 9.4 meters to make space for the planned parking, and that would also provide a bit more separation from that house. Any commercial uses would have their public entrances oriented to Sixth Ave South, so as not to impede on the residences to the south. And again, the signs rules would avoid any obtrusive signage. The proposed rezoning is in line with relevant policies in the SSRP and the MDP. And this particular policy in the London Road ARP contemplates amendments to the plan where necessary to achieve particular proposals. So again, the applicant hand-delivered invitations to neighbors within 60 meters. They held two open houses on July 10th and November 6th. No major issues were identified by city technical staff. And we hand-delivered 63 letters to the addresses shown in the slide, as well as placing signs on the parcel itself. Responses received from members of the public raised concerns about increased vehicle traffic, effects on on-street parking, and effects on city infrastructure. So to conclude on bylaw 6464, the proposed ARP amendment would be limited to the subject parcels. It would not affect the other parcels in London Road. And planning design supports the proposed amendment and recommends the City Council consider this report as information for the public hearing. And for bylaw 6465, the proposed rezoning is compliant with relevant policies in the SSRP and MDP. And planning design supports the proposed rezoning of these parcels to the new direct control districts and recommends the City Council consider the report as information for the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kilgar. I do know the applicant, Mr. Varga and Mr. Hachikowski are here. Make a presentation. That would be, move on forward. I think we've seen you before. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council. So as presented previously, Neighborhood Block is a housing program. I'm going to, for brevity's sake, we're going to run through it fairly quickly. But as a housing program that is economically dependent upon similar site dimensions, being three vacant lots to create the appropriate building size and unit count, creating the highest and best use for the land. So for this development in particular, the key features include 39 residential units with 85% market housing and 15% designated as affordable units under CMHC guidelines. So we're proposing a five-story building, complete with moderate amenities, designed for urban lifestyles, including rooftop patio and gardening space, a games room, co-working area and library, as well as secured interior bicycle parking for active transportation. Neighborhood Block ultimately is more than a housing development. It is an investment in Lethbridge's future. It addresses the housing needs across the continuum, enhancing neighborhood vitality and reflects a thoughtful, community-focused approach to urban growth. We've listened to feedback, we've refined the design, and we're proud to present a project that balances progress with respect for our community, with the intent to welcome new people and their stories to Lethbridge and the neighborhood. So with that, I'm happy to take any additional questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Varga. I'll now call on, I do have pre-registered speakers, if they are still here. And we'll start off with Mr. Westbrook, Don Westbrook. All right. And thank you for your patience, Mr. Westbrook.
Good evening, Mayor and councillors. I live on Fifth Street South, and I am against this. When I received the third notice of this, I took a stroll through the neighborhood and I counted all of the new infill duplexes, threeplexes, fourplexes. And even went down, I went from Fourth Street to Sixth Street, and then went from Seventh Avenue to Fifth Avenue. So I even counted the high-rises, the Hague Tower. And this is the results that I got from the parking that they provided by, when they built this. There's a fourplex on 623 Fourth Street and one on 641 Fourth Street. Both provided two units per off-street parking. Then there's 624 on Fifth Street. They provided two per unit. 608 is a threeplex, two per unit. Then there's a little townhouse development on 635 Sixth Street. There's like six little two-story units in there. Back lane has six garages back there, so they produce one. Then there is the London House Apartments, that's on Sixth Street. They have approximately 30 units, and they provided 32 parking spots. Then continuing up Sixth, I went to, I don't have an official count on that one. It's Hill de Brint Manor. Couldn't tell how many units are in there, but they provide five off-street parking units. Then the high-rise, the land, is it called a landmark? It has its own parcade. Two floors of that parcade are specific to residential parking. And it has approximately 75 units, so I'm guessing that they have one per unit. Then the seniors buildings in that area, there's the Legion Terrace, which is on Fourth Street. They have 33 units in there, and they provide 22 parking. So that's close to two-thirds of necessary parking or to one unit. Then you go to, what's the next one? Oh, the Heritage. Heritage is on Sixth. And it is an assisted living place, and they have 18 parking places. And I'd go out on a limb and say that the majority of the people that live there do not have driver's licenses, and they're going to have more parking than this new proposed development. And last of all is the Hague Tower. Hague Tower was built with 45 off-street parking units. And it's insufficient because if you go and count cars on a weekend, like a Saturday and a Sunday, you'll find on average, I did it three different weekends, there's an average of about 20 cars that have to buy a parking permit from the city. So there are up to like 65 parking spots taken up. And the Hague Tower is a good example of what's going to happen with this specific development because 20 units spilled out onto the street. And because they're north of Sixth Avenue, they have to buy parking permits. On the other side of the street, on the south side, you'll be granted a, show up with your registration for your vehicle, and you'll be granted permission to park on the street. Because that's how it is now. As a resident of a two-hour parking zone, I have to go every year with my registration to the transit office there, and the parking people are in there, and I get clearance to park there. So these people that live at this development, are they going to be given parking permission to park in a residential parking zone? Because if they are, then you're going to be giving them the blessing for it. And like, you have to admit that when you have a parking restriction of a two-hour parking zone, that somehow that is a partial admission that there may be a parking problem. And that zone is right smack in the middle of Zone 11, which is a two-hour residential parking. And one last thing, if you don't think that parking is an issue there, when the Cooley View Landing Building was built, that's where the Conny Bear is and the lateral law office and Bridge Land Services, I was asked if I had anything to say about that, and I said, yes, I have concerns about parking. And ever since that building's been built, there's been parking by employees of that building. And they very seldom get tickets. And if they do patrol at, like every two hours religiously, they just go and move their cars. They're not going anywhere. They'll just move their cars. They've done it in the past. So if somebody could tell me if that's going to happen, that residents of this new building, if it's developed, will be granted parking permission from the city? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Westbrook, Ms. Smith, Diane Smith?
She had to leave.
She had to leave, all right. Ms. Laverne?
Good evening. I started off with this, this was going to be a good afternoon speech, but a good evening, Mayor Higgin and City Councilors. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to this development proposal and requested bylaw amendments. I want to assure you that there were other concerned neighbors that were here earlier, but unfortunately, due to family commitments and also work commitments, they had to leave. So the lack of neighbors here speaking doesn't reflect the lack of concern. My name is Joanne Laverne, and my husband and I live at 635 Fifth Street, just nine houses from the proposed development. We've lived in our home for almost 35 years and have lived through many changes and challenges on the street and in the neighborhood. Nevertheless, we love our home, our neighbors and our neighborhood. And we're certainly keen to see continued positive changes happening on our street in the end in the area. However, we do have concerns about the proposed development, and we submitted a letter to our City Council, which is included in your package. I don't want to reiterate everything there, out of respect for everybody's time at this point. But in brief, our concerns around the proposal include a lot of the ones that have been stated for the other developments. The application to increase the height to five or six stories and include 47 to 49 units in a small footprint is a significant concern. Our concern is also of the waiver of the $1,500 fee per unit, the levy, which is in part of the London Road Development Plan. And in speaking to Mr. Kilgar, he, and he said it tonight, that for these proposals, you know, it's $67,000 per each of these proposals that the city would get. And you can't really do much with $67,000. But when you add that times by three, if City Council were to agree to these amendments and these proposals go forth, we're talking about $210,000 that would be in that kitty, which could then be used for parks and so on in the area. So while it starts off as being eh, chump change, I think it adds up to something that could be useful. So we are concerned about the waiver and why, what the print of that waiver would be. We're also concerned about the affordability of the residential development and the very significant impact, as you've heard, with respect to parking and the congestion, and the negative impact that will have on the existing neighbors, be they homeowners, tenants or businesses. As you are probably aware, Sixth Avenue is an extremely busy street and an arterial street. And Fifth Street has become essentially an exit point for people getting out of the downtown and out onto Scenic Drive or to other parts of the city. And we have buses that go both directions on the street. It's actually one of the more narrow streets in the London Road area. And the streets of Fourth and Sixth, on either side of us, are actually wider. And yet we have the benefit of buses going up and down the street all day and night. So this is a very busy area and with a lot of congestion. In addition to the points in my letter that you have, I note in his submission, the city planner, Mr. Kilgar cites various policies, including the South Saskatchewan Regional Plan and the Municipal Development Plan Policies 58 and 66. And I note from Councillor Croson's questions that those, apparently the Municipal Development Plan trumps some of the other plans, like the London Road plans. I disagree with Mr. Kilgar in his assessment that these proposals are consistent with those plans and those policies. And I would suggest, or we would suggest, that these policies actually kind of run in the face, contrast to that, the proposed development. So Municipal Development Plan 58 promotes affordable housing and facilitating the adequate supply of housing for all income groups. The same position is also appears in the London Road Policy 5.3.2M, which states, "A diversity of housing options shall be supported to provide accessible, affordable and attainable housing for all residents in the neighborhood regardless of age, income or social status." With all due respect to the city community planners, I don't, I understand, I heard tonight that there's supposed to be perhaps maybe six affordable housing units as part of this particular proposal. I'm not sure what we're defining and what those numbers actually mean in terms of affordability. But when I spoke to Mr. Kilgar, the other units in this will start with one bedrooms and possibly more, and starting at rents of $1,800 or more, which I don't really see as particularly affordable. And even for individuals who are not perhaps the residents or the individuals that Ms. James is referring to. So I really question how that's going to work and who is going to be drawn to these apartments. Policy, Municipal Development Plan Policy 66, sorry?
If I can just have you start to wind up over the time right now.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Policy 66 allows for increased density in the area where there's ancillary facilities available and so on. And I would say that in our experience living in the neighborhood, many businesses, in fact, are leaving the downtown area, not coming into the downtown area. And so I'm not convinced that these services are going to be available for the new residents in this, the proposed facility or in the proposed development. Myself, I've lost my dentist, my medical practitioner, who've all left to go out to the outer reaches of the city, where there's more parking and there's perceived greater safety and so on. Finally, it's talking about low-density, London Road policy and the low-density residential character. And I don't believe that a 47 to 49-unit housing complex on a parcel of land that was originally three single-family dwellings and a tiny Alberta Meat Market really fits the category of low-density nature for the neighborhood and the historic characteristics of the London Road area. So while my husband and I are not opposed to development, we're not opposed to actually having an apartment building on that corner. In fact, we would welcome it. The proposal, as it has been presented to City Council, I think, is problematic. And unless there were significant changes in terms of greater affordability of the housing, truly adequate parking provided, and also respecting the rights and the needs of both the new tenants and the existing neighbors, I don't see that this request for these changes in bylaws as reasonable or defensible. And we would request that City Council deny the application as it has been presented by the developers. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much, Ms. Laverne. Ms. Bolton. If she spoke on the first one, I would take it it would be similar. I think Ms. Bolton did speak on a previous. But if not, Ms. Bolton is, she in the gallery? No. All right. I'll now ask if there's anyone in the gallery that wishes to make a presentation that has not registered, we're speaking. Please come forward and state your name.
Mayor Higgin and council, thanks for, my name's John James. I'm owner of 507 Sixth Avenue South. I'm also a resident of 507 Sixth Avenue, unit number 202. We have about five commercial units there and two residential units. I'm for the development of, across the street. I think it'd be great to have positive, more positive users downtown. And I know Somis Group personally. They are a good company, and they... They are a good company and they have provided some great products in the in the neighbor, in the in the city. And I'm just going to say I'm all for more development downtown and positive users. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. James. Is there anyone else who wants to make a presentation on this? All right. Hello, Ms. James.
I'm not going to reiterate what I already said. I too live at 507 Sixth Avenue South. I am strongly in support of this development. I think that the more people we can get into the downtown core, the better. Sixth Street is a great example of vibrancy that we've created with bringing positiveness into that core. And as we would walk to dinner to Miro's or to Tap House or any of the other downtown businesses, as soon as you get to Fifth Street, it becomes very dark and dreary. And a development like this on the corner of Sixth Avenue and Fifth Street will definitely bring some vibrancy. It will bring people walking in that area. It will bring people back into the core. People have left the core because there isn't a positive vibe. The best way to bring a positive vibe to the downtown core is to bring the people back. So this is huge. I will also say we have a very large parking lot across the street from this proposed development. And if parking becomes an issue, I will call them and get them towed because that's what happens. It's just how it is with parking. If you park in someone else's lot, you'll just deal with parking. I will also say with my other hat on now, Lethbridge Housing, we do own Hague Tower. We also own Helmrest Manor. Hague Tower has 136 units in it. It has a very small amount of parking. We have less than 10 people that purchase parking passes from the Hague that park onto the street. Most people find it walkable, with the exception of course groceries, which would be, you know, something that we're missing in the core. There's the Unami, but it wouldn't be affordable. Helmrest Manor, I can tell you, is 142 units with less than 50 parking stalls. In my 18 years with the housing authority, I have received two complaints from the neighbor across the way on Sixth Avenue that someone parked on his street in front of his house. So 18 years, two complaints. So I just wanted to put that out for just random data for your information. But as a neighbor, I completely support this and I hope that council will support it to bring some vibrancy back into our core. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are any other members in the public wish to make a presentation on this matter? For a second time, are there any members of the public that wish to make a presentation on this matter? For a third and final time, are there any members of the public wish to make a presentation on this matter? Hearing none, the presenters. It's now time for city council to ask questions of the presenters. I'll start off with, and we've heard many different presentations here today. And again, to the to the team, to administration, if I could ask, and I'm sure Mr. Kilgore possibly to answer this question is, I've heard a lot about parking, parking, parking. It seems pretty much 99% of what we've heard today. My question, I know the answer to this because I've asked it numerous times, but I'll ask it again just for the benefit of those that may be listening. Street parking is not is not the parking that you get to have that is in front of your home, that is available for anybody to use. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mayor Higgins.
Yes. And it's it's something, and I know I've I've I run it at my home and I think probably everyone around this horseshoe and in public have realized that, that it's that is available for anyone. So I have heard comments throughout today as well about, you know, people are parking in front of my home. And unfortunately, that is is not, it's just not your your parking spot. It's great to have it. And I'll tell you, when I come home to my house, I'm really happy when that is available. But if it's not, it's it is unfortunate. So thank you very much for that that answer. Councillor Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Varga, if I just, it's been so long. You've started to look like Mr. Palladino. No. Sorry. We've heard over and over the issues here. One of them, and while parking, obviously. The other one is size, the density, the how big this this building is and how it's going to have an impact on on their neighborhoods. And I think you've you spoke to us earlier and said, the reason for the size is because it's that's how you can make it affordable for for you to build it. Is there a compromise where you can make it a little smaller to make it a little less congested? Or is that off the table?
So based on our different scenarios that we've run, and we've run many of them, a really simple way is that we remove all the affordable units, which is not what we really are in the game for here. We feel that this is an important piece to the contribution. But when we do the math, to lose a floor equals the affordable units have to go. And so that doesn't make business sense to us. That doesn't make community sense to us. So there really isn't anything else that we can pull. We've stepped the building down to be three stories. But with that, we've had to keep it at five to basically make those Tetris pieces work, if you can visualize that. The sites are the sites. This is the highest and the best use. This is the most economically advantageous for rents, for the distribution or the diversification of income within the building itself. It's when we look at other markets and we look at where the future really is going, it is this type of typology of building that makes economic sense for development, for banks and for residents.
So just remind me, because I'm sorry, I, at this time of the day, I'm getting a little foggy here. But you're, what you were looking for, what is the percentage of affordable units?
So 15% of the building.
Okay. And have you got, have you got an estimated cost per per unit rent rent wise?
So that's still a little bit in, if we go go forward after today, we have to negotiate some of those pricing with the bank ultimately because that's based on cost of construction. But we do have an understanding as to CMHC. And CMHC says that it's $1,075 for rent for affordable in the Lethbridge market based on 2019 data. So that's our starting point. And this helps us understand really as a barometer based on CMHC, their their requirement for that.
And so if you're not going through CMHC or you're not going through affordable housing, what's what's the rental going to look like in your, in the other units?
So ultimately, there would be a range depending on, because we've got six different unit designs, ranging from a studio through up to two bedroom. And that has a range that I don't have a crystal ball completely today because we're still, you know, call it up to two years, depending on how the process goes as to where we're going to be. But we're going to be market based. So it's it's what we feel is competitive within the market, within Lethbridge and within the neighborhood in which it resides. And so as of right now, that's approximately $1,800 a month. So up to a little bit more. And again, I'm I'm being transparent and wanting to share with you. These aren't hard numbers, but these are numbers that we're working with. And it gives council an idea that this is this is market for the majority of the building.
One last thought, another scenario. I think one of our speakers wanted to ask it. Is there a scenario by which you would sell a unit? I guess that would be sort of like a condo. Would you sell any of the units? Is that a, is that an option?
Good question. And I apologize if I was ambiguous in any way earlier. These are purpose-built rental buildings. Part of our value proposition to Lethbridge is that our business model is based on 50 years. We want to develop and own these buildings for 50 years as part of our community contribution. So when we talk about a good neighbor program, we talk about monitoring and being a part of this, we're in it for the long run. So this isn't a develop and flip. That is not our business model.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Croson.
Thank you, Mayor Higgins. Mr. Kilgore, you might be the one who can best answer this. We've been talking affordable housing, which is about 15% of these buildings that we've been discussing. The thing we haven't looked at is housing affordability because they're not the same thing. Affordable housing is a definition of CMHC very specific. But we're looking at just making housing across the spectrum more affordable. Does it in simple economic terms come to supply and demand?
Thank you for the question, councillor Croson. The short answer is yes, more supply would help to at least stabilize prices or have them rising at a slower rate, at the very least. We have seen some cities in the last few years who have made big changes to their their zoning rules to encourage more housing supply, where we have seen evidence of that working. Certainly in Lethbridge right now, we've had fast rising home prices, both for purchase and rent. I have some stats if you're interested. But essentially, in the last 20, 20 years, between 2000 and 2020, we saw the median family income go from $50,500 to $102,000. So a 102% increase, whereas the median single detached home went from $140,000 to $395,000 in the same time. So a 3.9 times increase. So houses are getting less affordable. We've seen the same with rentals where the vacancy rate has decreased to 2.3% in 2023. And at the same time, the average rent has gone from $833 in 2013 to $1,201 in 2023. So again, as vacancies are very low like that, that's, you know, almost zero vacancy because there will always be a little bit vacancy as people take time to to change over homes and they stay vacant for a short time. But essentially, we're very close to kind of zero vacancy and that helps to push up prices for renters as well.
And the reason we keep talking about the housing continuum is if you build houses, even very expensive houses, like more expensive than these or anything on there, you're actually opening up other housing for other people. And so even by building middle housing, you are then actually creating more housing as people move into these for people at the other end of the spectrum. Is that why we keep talking housing spectrum or housing continuum?
Yes, that's correct, councillor. And a good analogy that I see used sometimes is the the car market. So a minority of people buy brand new cars. And, you know, the the average price for a new car is maybe $50,000. But most people spend less than that and they buy used. So you buy a new car, you sell your three-year-old car to someone else. They sell their six-year-old car to someone else and so on. And then at the bottom end of the market, you've got, you know, a $1,000 car. And it's kind of the same with housing, not necessarily about age of housing, but about the different tiers in the market. And so even if you were to build so-called kind of luxury apartments, the people who move into that will vacate something else. And so it it trickles down to different tiers in the market as well.
So with a project like this, just to kind of wrap it all up, focusing only on affordable housing with a project like this ignores the fact that something like this means more housing affordable.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor Higgins.
Thank you very much. I see no further questions in the queue. I'll ask one more time, my colleagues, any questions? All right. Hearing none, I now declare the public hearing closed. This matter may be decided later this evening, following the public hearing. We'll just take a moment and get our colleagues to continue on with what we had started at nine o'clock. Thank you. Motion from councillor Palladino, 13.1 to 13.6. That, and the, oh, you've got it there. I'll turn the time over to councillor Palladino.
As you were saying, I was going to make a motion to postpone items 13.1 to 13.6 to the January 21 council meeting.
And before we vote on that, for those that were in the public hearing, it is extremely important, there's no communication outside of this public hearing, because information that councillor Crowe, you get information, I need to have that same information. So there can't be any engagement through the community. It does make it a little more difficult. It's just some soak time. But we'll return to our council meeting in January. But again, it's, you may drive by there because you're going to your home, but it's not to pull in and have a look or anything. Just want to make sure my colleagues remember that, and so that we don't put ourselves in a situation we shouldn't be in. So with that, I see there is a motion on the table. There's no questions. So I take that as...
I'll call a question.
Question's been called. All in favor? All right. And that is unanimous. And so with those that are waiting for the answer, as well as administration that do not have to be for that, this will come back in January. Oh, you can't sit in January. I wouldn't recommend it. So, thank you, thank you very much. All right. I have a motion here from councillor Schmidt-Rempel. Be a result, the city council approved the following recommendations. Number one, approve the 2025 to 2026 ongoing operating budget requirements for the continued operation of the Lethbridge and District Exhibition as follows. In 2025, LDE fee-for-service operating grant of 1.8 million, pay-as-you-go increase of LDE loan payments of 1.2 million, N46 LDE fee-for-service asset management lifecycle fund of $800,000, city operational requirements of $300,000 for a total operating budget of $4.1 million. And in 2026, LDE fee-for-service is 1.6 million, pay-as-you-go 1.2, N46 asset management lifecycle fund of $800,000, and city operational requirements for half a million in 2026 for a total of $4.1 million. And number two, approve the addition of four FTEs, one financial support and three facility services staff that are included within the 2025 to 2026 city operational requirements. And number three, direct administration to complete the refinancing of the Lethbridge and District Exhibition loan, to work with the Lethbridge and District Exhibition to transfer the ownership of the Lethbridge and District Exhibition facilities to the city of Lethbridge, forgive the outstanding loan receivable from Lethbridge and District Exhibition for the Agri Food Hub and Trade Centre, repay the outstanding external loan balance to the province, including any penalties as required through the lending agreement, and fund the repayment of the loan by allocating up to $7.3 million in city grant funding to reduce the principal borrowing from grant surplus from prior capital improvement program projects of $5 million, and available funding for future capital improvement program projects, $2.3 million, and allocating up to $10 million from municipal revenue sustainability reserve, and approving a 10-year internal loan of $10 million from municipal revenue stabilization reserve, with funding from the pay-as-you-go plan based on the prevailing provincial lending rate at time of borrowing. Number four, direct administration to implement option three from within this report deferred, and this is the deferred tax increase, one-time funding and contingency, to fund the $4.1 million operating costs for the Lethbridge and District Exhibition. And to open with questions, I do have a question for for Mr. City Manager or his designate. This does, if we put, if we can put that slide up, I'm not sure if we can get the slide up, that does have the options as far as where, when the repayment was, it's the tall... If that one we can put up, I don't know. That slide.
Are you looking for...
What it has down with the 5.1, 5.1, our current tax increase, if it is, if there's nothing until...
Couple, it's a couple more down there, Mr. Westerson. Keep going past this. It's the second-to-last slide. Keep going, a couple more. And one more. There you go.
Yes, that one. Okay, so, so this is option three. However, my question is, the difference between option four and option three is if there's service reductions, cost savings, efficiencies, whatever you want to call it, is there any options that we can take that, the third line there in option three, and reduce that amount? And because you would need to start sooner than later, of course.
So on option three, if that was the, so currently, the way the option three is showing there in that column is that it includes a deferred, deferred tax pressure of 1.4%. That's why you're seeing that the starting, potential starting for 2027 as 5.4. Had I looked back behind me, so 5.4%. I think what you're referring to, Mayor Higgin, is that if, if you wanted to do something else inside of that, inside of that amount for years 25 through 26, would include $1.5 million of contingencies. So there's 2.6 million. That's where the 1.4% comes from. That would be the area where you'd have to adjust the resolution or so forth to talk about service level changes in that. Because that's the portion that gets carried on in 2027. Sorry, that's 2.6 million.
2.6 million.
Million of the total 4.1 that's going, each year will be coming from one-time amounts in that scenario.
And the other goes to contingency 1.6, was it?
1.5 million is, did I get that right here? I'm tired of my math. Yeah, 1.5 million, in the sense that that comes from the corporate budget contingency. So that's ongoing funding inside of there. The portion that's not is the remaining 2.6, which is coming from BAUs and carryover amounts in that scenario.
Right. Okay, thank you. Councillor Carlson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, I'm trying to figure out, because this one wasn't expected. I mean, so I didn't do a lot of number crunching on this. So we are allocating 2.6 million of one-time funding each year. Not just, because the way it looks is that the impact on the city of Lethbridge is allocates $2.6 million of one-time funding and 1.5 million of contingency, which is 4.1. But we need 4.1 a year. And so we need 25, 26, and then 27 is when the bullet gets bitten.
That is correct. So actually, Mr. Westerson, if you could bring up that slide again, and bring it up to a slide, and go to slide number four, it might help with the discussion here on the amounts that are inside of it. That's, yeah, okay, it's right there too. Okay. So inside the body of that slide deck, you'll see inside there for number three, to your point, councillor Carlson, each year, we need 4.1 million for '25 and '26. Each year, we'll have to pull out $2.6 million in one-time funding from BAUs and carryover, so of that, so $5.2 million over two years. And then in 2027, the way this originally was, this option was, it would have to have an additional tax increase of $2.6 million, which would equate to roughly 1.4% based on the current tax amounts. I think what Mayor Higgin's talking about is there any option there that you could do service-level pieces in that to offset that?
I get that. I guess, sorry, when I looked at this, and even if I doubled one of the numbers, the 2.6 that's being pulled out a year, that's 5.2. And then 1.5.
1.5 each year.
It is each year.
Each year. So because of the, and this is on the, once we allocate in the corporate contingency, we have 1.5 million in the operating budget that would be there every single year thereafter. It's an ongoing.
Sorry, I thought it was like 500 and a million, then 1.
That's right. And so we had some carryover for 2025. That gets us to 1.5 million. Then by 2026, we actually have 1.5 million annually, and that carries on.
And if anything else comes over the wall, like the government says, oh, even fewer grants in place of taxes, we'd have to cover that from the MRSR, I'm guessing.
That is correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So I don't see any other questions. I was going to ask if there was a motion to divide possible. If I, I'd like to divide out number...
Wait, there's a, there's a question, councillor Dodak.
It's the motion to divide that is being anticipated. I propose that items one through three be voted on separately, and item four as a standalone.
So can I request a question on that then, if I could? So if, and number four talks about the 4.1 million, which does include what is in options one through three anyways? Because I'm looking at the FTEs, and I'm looking at the pay-as-you-go, the loan, the re... I want to say the remortgaging, the loan, the refinancing of the loan. All of that comes with the 4.1 million, which is what number four does state. Oh, okay. Gotcha. Because that was the question. So it will be, it will be split then. So on the table here, we do have one to, one through three, and we'll vote on four separately. So one to three, if we could, I would, I have to ask a question on that. Four FTEs, we talked about there being term positions. Four years is too long for term positions. And if not, if we wanted to term positions, would we do two years? Or there was conversation about having contract work done. Can you explain a little more about why number two, the four FTEs?
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. So, yes, so what we're requesting here is the actual approval of the FTEs, how we utilize those FTEs. So if the funding right now is an option three, where it's a deferral piece on it, we wouldn't have ongoing funding in that regard. And so we would probably look at either terms or so forth, or contracts. One of the problems for ourselves right now is that based on council, based on the need to have council approve FTEs, we need to have the ability to use them. So all the standards have that in there.
As FTEs and not, but just unfunded, I hear that right, right at the moment, it's not?
So the FTEs are funded within the total budget. So they give you the budget in this. However, because the funding is one-time, we would have to, or at least this stage here, the bulk of the funding is one-time. We would have to look at it, these are contract positions or terms at this stage.
Thank you. Councillor Carlson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If that raised a question for me, if I can, through you to City Manager or Designate, these are city FTE. Because I guess we just earlier had the discussion where no council would provide the envelope of money, but the LDE board would be the ones hiring. And so they're not going to be hiring city employees. So that's...
Actually, these ones would be. So as the assets gets transferred over to the city of Lethbridge, these would become city facility services or treasury and financial services employee, or contracts through us, because we're managing the asset. That, that work is within our scope. That's part of the reason why you see the city operational requirements there. It was our city. What the conversation was talking about before too is, in fact, right now, we have somebody working over at, on contract, from financial side, over with the LDE on that. And that, that person is actually a city person seconded, I guess is the best way to say it, to work with them.
I think I slightly understand. I guess my only thought was we have to keep the LDE as a separate entity in order to get the ag grant. So I was still going back into the thing where it would be council providing the envelope of money and the LDE board having all these employees.
So, little different, if you scroll up a little bit here, Mr. Westerson, to the top of that funding amount, where you see the 1.8 million or the attachment one, those are the funding amounts that are going to LDEs. We're cutting basically a check to them, so they run their operations. They use that for staff and all the people that run the, there. There is a component where our staff and city is servicing from our facility asset maintenance, not with them at all. So the bulk of the workforce is not city staff. It's all to do with LDE and most of the grant up there. Besides, what's coming to the city is the 1.2 million, because we're looking after loan. We're maintaining $800,000, and LDE administration will have to request that through a process to actually gain access to the, well, actually, it's $1,500,000 once this gets added to N46, to be able to get that through the city. And then, of course, the city operational resources is for us to backfill and do some pieces of work inside of there.
So thank you. Now I completely understand the thought process. But it begs a follow-up question. One of my colleagues has been saying, eke it along till 2028, and then sell, baby, sell. And we've approved five FTEs that no longer have... And we've approved five FTEs that no longer have a.
Yeah, so in that regard, that's the, that's the issue with, the one issue that we'll have to manage on our side where we either use contracts, like, like external.
Gotcha.
Service providers, or a contract employee, a term. I mean, obviously that, and it does pose us a little bit more difficulties in getting in recruiting staff in that area than, than option one where it's a permanent.
Right. Gotcha. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
A question I have for our city manager or designate, if, if we split apart, if we remove out two, for example, the, the FTEs, that removes, as I think I heard, the city operational requirements of 300,000 and 500,000. Or is it just late and I'm not?
No, that would be correct. The two ties into the 300 and 500,000. And for us to meet the requirements of what, of managing those assets as, as, you know, as was discussed with the Deloitte and so forth, we actually need the funding to actually get to the level. And unfortunately, right now, the LDE operations and their facilities group doesn't have the resources to manage the building effectively. And they're actually.
Can you steer me to where, I couldn't find that in Deloitte. I'm not saying that it's wrong. Can you tell me where they said to hire four FTEs?
They didn't say to hire four FTEs. They said for us to actually manage it. And then our staff is looking at, well, to manage a building of that complexity with that size of scope, this is the requirements we need. So Deloitte is saying that they should come over to us where we have the expertise and knowledge.
So currently, we don't have, have that expertise and knowledge at the facility to continue.
That's right. At LDE, they don't have the amount of staff and so forth to manage it to the same standards that we would run the building at. They will manage it to the standards they manage the other buildings at.
Okay, there's no, no further questions. So I see that we've got one through, three, oh, Counselor Dodik.
Based on the questions and answers to some of the questions, I'm now going to propose that one and two be separate, three be separate, and four be separate.
All right. So, so you're, you're taking apart the, the operational side, the loan part, and then, of course, the final, the restructuring of the loan being three, and then four being, okay. All right. And process-wise, we're okay to continue off of this? It's now been split?
Yep. Anybody can make a split. It doesn't even have to be a voter motion. They could just request that anything be split.
Okay. So, so one and two. Well, we'll start with one and two then. Questions on one and two being broken out? I see no, no questions. And so with that, it would be Counselor Dodik's, Counselor Dodik to, to vote on one and two. Do you want to open debate on one and two?
Mr. Mayor, can you please read it out for me once again, please?
Sure can. And one and two is, we resolve the city council approved the following recommendations. Approve the 2025 to 2026 ongoing operating budget requirements for the continued operation of the Leithbridge District Exhibition as follows. LDE fee for service operating grant for '25 is 1.8 million, '26 is 1.6 million. Pay-as-you-go for the LDE loan is 1.2 million in 2025 and 1.2 million in 2026. N46 LDE fee for service is 800,000 in 2025, and that includes the life cycle fund, Counselor Parker, and 800,000 in 2026. Operational requirements are 300,000 in 2025, and in 2026, 500,000, that's for the FTEs. So for a total operating budget of, for both years of 4.1 million for, for each of the years. And then number two is to approve the addition of four FTEs, one financial support and three facility services staff that are included within the 2025 to 2026 city operational requirements. That's one and two together that would be broken out. And so, which is going to be voted on separately. Is that, you understand that, Mr. Counselor Parker?
So how is that being funded? Is that by, by approving this, what does it equal for a tax increase? Or are we just a business model?
So that's, that's, that's in number four. So that's just one and two is to approve the operating budget requirements for the operation of, of LDE. And the FTEs are included in there as well.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Counselor Dodik.
What's that?
You move the debate.
Okay. Shouldn't be any surprise to debate. I'd be voting on the combined, one and two. I'll be voting for three, and I'll be voting and debating four. That's my opening and closing.
Okay. So in one and two, we can call for the vote, or I guess we take it by roll call, Madam City Clerk, for one and two.
Counselor Campbell.
In favor.
Counselor Crowson.
In favor.
Counselor Dodik.
Opposed.
Counselor Parker.
Opposed.
Counselor Schmidt-Rempel.
Opposed.
Acting Mayor Carlson.
In favor.
Deputy Mayor Palladino.
In favor.
Mayor Higgins.
Opposed.
That's four to four. Tie, lost.
So next, we're on to three, and I'll read that off again. It's a direct administration to complete the refinancing of the Leithbridge District Exhibition loan. I think we know what that is all about without having to, to the cost savings over the, the period and how that would look. So number three is, is any questions on number three, Counselor Dodik? Questions on number three?
I have no questions on number three.
No questions? All right. So just the call for the vote?
Yeah, I support it.
Okay. We'll go for a roll call. Madam City Clerk.
Counselor Crowson.
In favor.
Counselor Dodik.
In favor.
Counselor Parker.
I'm still reading it, but go ahead.
We'll wait.
Counselor Carlson, in, in between here, sorry, we're reading this out.
I was just gonna say, Counselor Parker, this is, this is the standalone item about the refinancing of the loan, basically taking the loan at the higher interest, refinancing it through the MRSR, saving us some money, if that helps.
Yes.
Thank you very much for paraphrasing that. I favor.
All right.
Counselor Schmidt-Rempel.
In favor.
Acting Mayor Carlson.
In favor.
Deputy Mayor Palladino.
In favor.
Mayor Higgins.
In favor.
Counselor Campbell.
In favor.
Eight, zero, that carries.
Yeah, so, so since one and two were not approved, number four, now voting on it separately doesn't make a difference because there's no budget.
Do we have, effectively, closed the exhibition?
Well, there's, there's got to be, I mean, you take the time, I'm just speaking to my colleagues, and if you've got something else to, to come back, it's, there's, we've, we've talked that this is going to be a little different going forward. Counselor Carlson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know what it takes to get a motion to reconsider. I, I wouldn't mind. I don't think there was much debate, and perhaps I misunderstood the thought process that had gone into the crafting of the resolutions. So I'm wondering if a motion to reconsider, we could reopen debate on one and two.
Motion to reconsider must be made by somebody that voted in favor of the motion.
I voted in favor.
All right.
Yes, you did.
Majority vote, same meeting.
All right. And we just need a majority on that to reconsider? All in favor? And that's, to reconsider?
Actually, just give me one second just to read the procedure by, sorry. Two-thirds vote.
Well, it was, it was everybody, so unanimous.
Yeah. Acceptive. Counselor Dodik, you're in favor of reconsidering? I just didn't see your hand. I saw everybody else's.
In the interests of allowing a fulsome debate, I don't really think that some members of council understood what it meant to vote against one and two. So, yes, I'll vote in favor of reconsidering so everyone can have a debate on it.
Thank you. All right. Counselor Carlson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess one of the concerns I had is that we quickly, I think, took a vote on something that we didn't quite understand the ramifications on. If, if council has a different view than, than I, and forgive me for assuming, we know it happens, making an ass out of you and me, I assumed that there was interest amongst my colleagues of keeping the exhibition alive. Even if, even if you do come over to the way of thinking of, of closing down the exhibition, we still need to find 4.1 million and some ongoing dollars. So I thought motion to reconsider, we could discuss whether the funding of 4.1 million a year is, is what people are okay with to keep the exhibition alive, or if folks are okay with killing the exhibition and reducing the funding. The other option is to remove the four FTEs, if that was the assumption, which was causing people concern, and ensure they are, the addition of four contract service staff.
I already asked that. That can't happen.
Can't happen. All right.
No contract.
Okay, just, it was just, just I'll put it out there that I'm still in, in support of this option, but I could be convinced to close her down.
And so a question I would have for CFO, if you did not, so if this option, if, for example, city operational requirements, 300 and 500,000 was removed from this, you're saying this would still need to be shuttered down?
So if it didn't have those requirements and then inside of there, we would have, we wouldn't be able to manage it, the, the asset in the way that, that, that Deloitte had done. There would have to be a portion of that for sure. We do need, LDE doesn't have a financial person, and they do need one, and that's why we're contracting through ourselves so far on that as well too. So we would need at least, at minimum, the finance person. I'm gonna let Mr. Riley speak.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to weigh in on the maintenance side, many years' experience here, and I've used this example many times over the years. If you drive a vehicle, you can definitely get away without changing oil, sometimes for a long period of time, but eventually, it's gonna bite you, and it's gonna cost big time. That's exactly the same with the buildings. We are finding even with the new buildings, and I made the public statement about little to no planning appears to have been done for the future maintenance and operation of the facility. That's exactly it. When you build a 268,000 square foot facility with high-tech HVAC and maintenance systems, you need to be able to maintain it. You void warranties, those costs from not changing filters, not doing the regular maintenance costs you massively down the road. That's a fact.
Well, I, I'm just looking at, at the life cycle fund. Now, you're, we're just trying to look at dollars, or I'm speaking for myself, trying to find dollars to, to minimize this, on a brand-new building. I know we put 800,000 in, we would put in for life cycling on our, on any building, or, not saying 800,000, but the percentage of that, because we take very good care of our facilities. We don't want to be what, what we've ran into right now. My question is, this is, this is over 25, 30, 35 years of them not doing it. If two years, if we didn't have even these 800,000, I, I just, I'm just wondering with brand-new buildings, how much, if this is as important to, for those savings, to, to move this forward? It's, it's, I don't want to be either a close down over 800,000 or a close down over the city operational requirements. I'm just trying to wrap my head around that. So two years without putting into life cycling will, absolutely would not work. Is that fair to say?
The maintenance, again, the staffing, the people that do that work, that's just a must. I, I have, there's been a lot of thought gone into this. The life cycle piece, and of course, you know, we, we do have a considerable number of experts. The life cycle piece, you certainly could try and short that, but then if costs come along, as they do, those will be unexpected one-time costs that you haven't been building the funds for. It's as simple as that, and the probability, I don't gamble. So that's why this is the plan based on best experience.
All right. So we go back to reconsider, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Campbell.
I'm sorry, I'm, I just want to get a sense of where we're going with this. I mean, is, from what I've just seen, is the majority here, this horseshoe, want to shut down the exhibition. That's the, based on the vote we just had. Am I, am I missing that? Or, or are, are we, are we, okay, so are we, are we, I mean, because we've got the options here about whether we're gonna defer tax, which is what I'm, I was thinking was going to be the ultimate final answer to this. But, so I, I just need some clarification of where we're going. If, if someone can help me.
I think, Mr. Matthews, if, if we go to option three, as we sat down and we, when you met with council, I think that's important, just kind of talk about option three, if you could, because option three still accounts for us having to move some of those dollars forward or putting them off till, till later. However, we're seeing now that we need 4.1, so that would still have to come from MRSR to move it forward right now and will be paid later. Just if you can give a, a high level again on that, because you explained it very well last week when, when we were in discussion.
Yes, thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor Higgins. So, yes, I don't know, oh, yeah, perfect, it's on the one screen there, I'm looking at the wrong screen. So deferred tax increase are this option, option three. What it does, it uses 1.5 million of our, of our contingency. The budget contingency, instead of the full contingency. It allows that money to be ongoing, so that is ongoing component of it. It also has 2.6 million of one-time funding that'll be used from BAU and 2023 carryover amounts to make up the difference in both 2025 and 2026. So that's 2.6 million dollars per year of one-time money coming into it. What it ends up looking like in 2027 is that 2.6 million will need to have a deferred tax increase, so that, a tax increase at that time. And that currently is around 1.4 million. So some of the things that it, it does is it, you know, obviously, you know, the pros is that it keeps the additional tax increase of, currently set at 5.1, you know, approved at 5.1, for 2025 and 2026 the same. It doesn't change that. And then 27, that's where you'll see, instead of just baseline inflation, now you'll have the 1.4 at that point in time coming forward. And of course, the other things on the, on the negative side of it, it does reduce the MRSR components for next council, because you're using those funds that we would put back, instead of the BAU funds and so forth, being there as one-time, it would roll into the MRSR. 50% of that is what council uses for one-time initiatives. of that is what council uses for one-time initiatives. And of course, as Counselor Carlson had mentioned earlier, that, using the full contingency, anything that comes additionally down the pipe will require. And one of the reasons why the option at the very end for 2027 is higher, because we know that we'll probably have to add another half a million dollars of contingency for 2027. So, I don't know if that, that helped, Mayor Higgin.
Well, and I think the biggest thing is that if we're talking about, I know some of us said, we do not want an additional tax increase. So, a balanced budget, if you will, of our 5.1%, is, if we approve one and two, and, and four, well, we've already done three, so one and two, because we can't do four without approving one and two. With one and two would keep us at a 5.1% for two years, but you're going to, I'm not saying you're going to increase, it will increase in 2027 by 1.4 additional percent. The question is, is by that time, you know, my question's going to be, cost savings, efficiencies, service reductions, whatever that looks like, that gives three years for that, understanding you need to start thinking about that now in order to realize it in 27, is that?
So, Mayor Higgin, just on that, a couple, couple points there on it. One and two in the options in here, approve the expenditure of 4.1. Option four approves the funding of it. So, we're not balanced if we just approve one and two, because now you've, we've added an extra 4.1 million into our operating budget on expense, but we have it included in the additional.
You know, I just mean, you can't do number four without doing one and two.
That's right, the other way around, you can't, yes, you can't do number four, because you'd be putting more money into the budget, but you wouldn't have an expense, you'd have a, you know, from that point of view. So, either one, they have to be together in that regard. One and two also and four, because four is the funding, the revenue, and one and two is the expense.
One and two would be the same, no matter which
Which option?
That's right. Council decides on. If you wish to keep the exhibition alive, this is the money you need to do it. Number four is how you do it. So, one and two will be the same regardless.
The one and two, we thought was the easiest.
Yes. I did. And so, so one and two will stay the same. Four is the one where you say, do you want to increase taxes? Do you want to defer taxes? Do you want to empty the MRSR?
I'm trying to keep you awake, though.
Yes, trying to keep you awake, Mr. Matthews. When does our next operating budget cycle start? So, we've got a stub year
That's correct.
For 2025. When does the next operating budget cycle start?
So, '25 and '26, we're still within the, in the current budget stream.
Yes.
2027 is the stub year that council in 2026 will approve, really what the intent of that is, is an inflationary component, or any of these structural gaps inside of the budget. The full next four-year budget will be deliberated in 2027 for '28, '29, '30, and '31.
So, 2027 is where we also have an opportunity to look at this again, and see, we may not see a full 4.5, 4.4 start point, because we still don't know where inflation, we're estimating a 3% inflation, right? We are estimating that we may need 3% for encampments.
Point zero three, is it?
Point zero three for encampments, yeah. Point zero, or point three for encampments. We may not need that anymore, we don't know. Things may go great, and our encampment strategy completely changes.
So...
Taylor Swift is coming, yes.
So, that is, that's the estimated starting point, and of course, the way I do it is I do it from a conservative standpoint, and looking at how it would be, and so the minimum looks like, based on that scenario with deferred, would be. However, I can't forecast where, if it's 1% or 3% on the range of inflation.
Yeah, and then, we look at the deferred LDE at 1.4%, is that going to stay at 1.4% or is that also going to flex?
So, inflation would be a factor, obviously, inside there, but also as the thing, so, based on 2024 numbers, it's 1.4%. As it grows, it comes down the other way. So, you know, last year, if you had asked me, it'd be 1.7 million, or one, roughly, save for a 1%. This year's 1.8 million is a 1%. So, those, that number will fluctuate a little bit in time, but the baseline of where we're measuring it from today's dollars
So, this, this 5.4% is in today's dollars.
In today's dollars, yeah.
And I had another question and totally lost it, so I will think on that, give me a minute.
I'll finish with this question here. The thing that we have not thought about, so I'm seeing 2027 automatically go up. It's, it's gonna look like there's gonna be some, some increase, because we haven't, we've ruled out if there's anything that comes from provincial, anything comes from federal, anything, any more additional cost savings. We had a cost savings of over $3 million here last year. That means that zero cost savings is going to still get us to that needing of 1.4%, for example. But every single dollar we get goes against that 1.4, is that not fair to say, in that, in the 2027 budget?
But we're spending it. We're spending it in 4.1 and 4.1, we're using all the reserves, we're using all the contingencies, it's not gonna be.
So, I, so I, there are probably two different pieces to that there. So, I'm just trying to make sure I get the answer right here to the question on this. So, I think what you're referring to, Mayor Higgin, is that the 1.4% or the, say, the grant funding, so if, on that chart that you see before you right now, in '25 and '26, see, going to 1.8 million down to 1.6 million. If by 2027, which goes to 1.3, it doesn't show on here, just that we're not requesting that approval at this stage, if there was, say, it went down to a million, yes, then that would, the total 4.1 million would go down, which then would change the 1.4%. That's assuming that there was more pieces into that, and efficiencies and so forth. I think that's if
Yeah, no, that's exactly what I meant. So, it's different than what, what you're saying. So, again, I've, maybe I've got more faith than others at this provincial government of possibly getting some dollars moving forward, or realizing other savings somewhere else. However, that is, 2027 is still, would not be approved until the next, the stub year.
That's correct.
So, so we're not tying the hands of that future council, they can still make those changes, what they're going to do as far as taxation for 2027, for those stub years, is that correct?
That's right. So, it's not an automatic that
That's 1.4.
We would put in.
Okay.
A little bit different than on the encampment front when we did it, that was more of an automatic, yes.
Right.
That's right.
All right. Counselor Schmidt-Rempel.
The question that I was gonna ask, Mr. Matthews, is in relationship to refinancing the loan. And part of refinancing the loan, does that draw down that 2027 5.4%? Is that calculated into that already?
Sorry.
So, when we refinance the loan, we're gonna save money on payments.
Right.
Right? So, is that savings already considered into the 2027 5.4% in option three, or do we, do we still have that to look forward to?
So, how the refinancing works inside of it, although we, we are gonna save in the long term, $15 million over 30 years, we don't, that is over a longer period of time of the interest that if you'd gone out that far, differential. The way, the 1.2 million you see on the screen here, what we've done is that we've kept the payments the same for the loan, just shortened the loan. So, payments stay the same, loans get shortened, and the rate, interest rate goes down.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So, you're already getting that built in.
Okay, thank you.
And also, the final question that I have before we go to vote on this is, 2027 is not approved by council yet, just up to 2026, correct? So, so we're throwing up an estimated, but there's, that is not solidified at all.
That number, from my perspective, that's the starting point. I know what you're saying on your, on your side there as well. Council has not approved the 2027, that's why you, we don't have the 2027 number in here for LDE, because currently, the only reason we're bringing '25 and '26, that matches with our current approved '25 and 2026 operating budget.
Which would keep it at the balanced budget of 5.1% for those last two years
It would keep, it would keep the rate at the 5.1% if council approves another funding source for these expenditures, yes.
Correct. Being that through BAUs or MRSR?
BAUs or MRSR, or whatever council chooses.
All right. Thank you. Just, maybe just a couple, couple minutes. Did you have a question, Counselor Palladino?
My two parameters are, I need to be able to, to figure what option. I had the option four, I had it mixed up with condition four here.
I should just say, number, number four on here is not option four, it's a, yeah.
It's just a, please insert option here.
Yeah, insert the option, which is, you're looking at option three, which currently sits on here, is no tax increase for next year, in the following year, however, pull from reserves and BAU, or whatever we decide to do, and then in 2027 stub year, the next council, obviously, will have to make that decision moving forward.
But no, no tax increase
No increase.
And no closing of the
And no closing of
We still have to vote on one and two.
But you still have to vote on one and two.
We still haven't saved the exhibition.
Number one and two is saving the exhibition, to be quite honest, so. To reopen the building.
Yeah, we have to reopen it after 25 minutes.
Just make it clear when
Write that down, Belinda.
Yeah.
So, who's making the motion?
All right. So, do you want a couple minutes, my colleagues? You're, you're good?
I'll forget if you go too long.
Need the reconsideration first, please.
Motion to re-
It was unanimous.
We did that, we did, it was unanimous.
Yeah, we did, we did.
Yeah. Remember, had to get Rayco to finally give his vote, too, so it was unanimous to reconsider.
Yeah.
All right. So, back to 1.2, reconsidered, a vote, if we can go to a roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Do you have a question? Okay. Ready to vote. On one and two, right? Are you clear, Counselor Palladino?
Counselor Campbell, are you wanting to debate on this?
Okay, we're all ready?
And just for Counselor Parker, we've heard, I'm sorry, but just for Counselor Parker, I forget that he's, he's online here. This, this is pretty much to keep
No, I'm okay, I got it, I got it.
Keep exhibition open, okay. Thank you. All right. Madam City Clerk, roll call.
Counselor Dodek.
Opposed.
Counselor Parker.
Favor.
Counselor Schmidt-Rempel.
In favor.
Acting Mayor Carlson. Deputy Mayor Palladino.
In favor.
Mayor Higgin.
In favor.
Counselor Campbell.
In favor.
Counselor Crowson.
I've counted, so it doesn't matter what I say, but emphatically in favor.
6-2, Carrie.
All right. So, now, we do have an exhibition still that is open, it's just how is it going to be funded, and when is it gonna be funded? So, we will move to number four. So, we have voted on number three, number one and two, and the last one is, number four, is to direct administration to implement option three from within this report, deferred tax increase, one-time funding, and contingency, to fund the 4.1 million operating costs for Lethbridge District Exhibition. So, any questions on that?
Counselor Carlson.
I guess I can't make a, this wouldn't be a friendly at all. So, I, I, yeah, I'd like to make a motion to amend it, to read the, the black part, to read option one, full tax increase in 2025, if I have a second.
That's, that would probably, it's my understanding, that would, that is, that is so different, that it is not just a change of this. If this does, if this fails, I believe you can entertain that as a motion arising, but, Madam City Clerk, is this too different to move from, from being not funding to complete funding and
It does not constitute an amendment.
Yeah.
It does not.
No.
No. All right. So, with that, I see no further questions. So, again, option three, from this report, deferred tax increase, one-time funding and contingency, to fund the 4.1 million operating costs for Lethbridge District Exhibition. And Madam, oh, wait a minute, Counselor Carlson.
Who's ever opening?
Yep.
You really want me to? No, no. I just want everyone to understand why I voted against one and two initially, well, both times, and that was because option five was going to be my option, which was, in fact, to close it down. So, voting against one and two was going where I wanted to go, but I understood what was happening, thus the reconsideration. But in speaking to option three, I'm not gonna go into all, all the details, but I think it's, it's fairly clear that this project was just way too big, way too grandiose, and the guardrails were not in place in terms of putting on hold on the expenditures. Option one, that Counselor Carlson tried to, as an amendment, was the only one that actually was in compliance with city policy, wasn't raiding the BAUs, the MRSR, reducing it to a very small level. I'm not gonna go too hyperbolic on this, but the problem is, we still, or one of the problems is that even by funding this without a tax increase, the reality is, we're raiding, or breaking the piggy bank to maintain this facility. And I understand the importance of the Lethbridge District Exhibition, but I don't understand the importance of maintaining the payments that we have to on an ongoing basis. We heard that even once we get down to a number of years down the road, we're still looking at a facility that is gonna have cost recovery in the 45% range. To me, that is not sustainable, and that's why my option five, which was never introduced, was to shut it down, unfortunately. We know we can't rely upon the province, because we tried that a year ago, in terms of trying to get approximately $2 million from them to assist us, before council voted, or the majority of council voted in favor of basically throwing a lifeline to the, to the exhibition. We also knew that this day was coming, because it was told that a decision was going to have to be made at this point in time, and we were given our options, we were given our recommendations. Number four is not the recommendation, it is not against, is not city policy, it's, it's a dangerous move, to take, in my view, because for a number of years, we're going to be seriously having the piggy bank depleted. I understand why it's not palatable to raise taxes, I don't like that myself either, but then again, I wouldn't have voted for option one. So, if my option was option five, it's not on the table. I can't support option four, or number four on this resolution.
And I need, a question arising from that, please, to Mr. City Manager's designate, by closing this down, there's still a tax implication, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because there, there is a tax implication closing it. All right. Counselor Carlson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Counselor Dodek, for going first, because I don't have to say half as much. I, too, would, would, would have supported moving towards mothballing, and, and saying, you know, we went too fast, too far, was it Was it Icarus who flew too close to the sun? I got burned. But I didn't think that was the will of my colleagues, and I, I will always support the will of my colleagues. And so I was trying to get it to a place where I could actually vote for it, in favor of it. And the only way I could have done that is by taking full ownership of the finances. And for me, you don't push things off. You don't try and say, no, 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 it's, it's good, there's no, it's, it's all free now for a couple of years. And that's what this says to me, is we're trying to make it look like we're not using taxpayers' dollars in our MRSR. You've got to realize that when we empty that out, when the Memorial Cup bids come along, when the different things come at us, we're going to have no money to do those. And, and I'm fine with that if that's the way my colleagues want to go. However, personally, I was ready to own it and go to the public and say, oh, yeah, man, we got Delta, you know what? But we're going to own up to it. And yep, folks, we're going to put it on the tax bill now, so we all know that this is what it's actually costing, not try and play a little shell game. So I won't be supporting this, because the only way, as I tried to do my very unfriendly amendment, was the way I would feel better about owning up to mistakes. So I won't be voting in favor. Thank you.
Counsel Campbell.
Thank you. First off, I just, I just have to commend management for realizing where we were and, and then making, making the effort to find out why we were where we were and how we got here. And I think I really appreciate all the work that you, you've done, and I know you probably hear the word exhibition, you wake up in your sleep. So it's, it's, you know, I'm not going to, I'm not going to go into finger pointing or, or, because there's lots of fingers to point, but we're here where we are, and as someone has said, you can't unbuild it. We have a gem of a building there. Was it too big? Probably. We've, we've started to change things, we've started to turn things around. We've got a man in, in place right now, Mr. Galucci. I'll bow down to you. You've really done a remarkable job in a virtually impossible situation, so I thank you for that. Okay, I may, I may be the eternal optimist, and that may be, may bite me, but I really believe that with, with the people you've got, and there's some great people at the exhibition right now, that are really, they're dedicated to making this happen. And I, with, with the right leadership and finding the right, you know, the right events that come forward and then maintaining the, the agribusiness strategy or the, the agrifare that, that it is, I think that's, we can only move up. So that's, that's where we're at. I mean, I was, I initially wanted to go with, with a tax increase right off the bat, but many people came up to me throughout, you know, just wandering around after they asked me if I was going to be Sanna this year, and they said, please, no more taxes. Please, no tax, we can't. And this has been a rough year. Inflation has been, it's been tough. You only have to go out to, for, for meals to find out how expensive things are, so I, I get that. So I think this option, while it's not the greatest, it's not the best, it's not the ideal, we, we were never in an ideal situation. This can work. This, this, this has to work, and I, I really hope it does. So I'll be supporting this resolution.
Counsel Schmitt Rempel.
Thank you very much, and thank you again, Mr. Matthews, for all the work that you and your team have done on this over the past year, particularly over this past week in talking to us, getting the different options together and hearing what we've had to say. My focus for this project has always been on my commitment to the economic development and benefit to the region. We're not just supporting the Agri Food Hub, but we are investing in our commitment to agriculture, agribusiness, and economic development in the city, region, and province. Events are coming here, and they are coming to this facility. This facility is putting the region on the map as a place to do business, and we hear that in the monthly reports. We see those events and that investment growing. As our CAO stated earlier today, our future engagement with the province, particularly around this building, would be conditional upon a strategic plan and a business plan. Last year, the province refused funding because of the viability of the current business plan is in doubt, and to this, I think it's premature to implement, implement a tax increase. Further, raising taxes without a viable business plan is inconsistent with our own expectations of external organizations. We have the ability to support this project with current funds in place, and I would suggest that over this next year, we look at the business plan, create that, look at a, look at creating that strategic plan, and look for cost savings by working with the sportsplex and partners in the community to find efficiencies. We see that we can lower and perhaps will lower that 5.4 base come 2027. We can build that business plan, and we can feel comfortable and confident in it, and then we can have a business plan that the province can have confidence in as well. So I will be supporting this.
Thank you. I, I too will be supporting this. I, I, when I look at the future and the, the cost that we're going to have to, you know, bear at one time, if, if it's in now or, or later, I'm still of, still of the mindset, we're dealt a lot of, I mean, some pretty crappy cards, to put it bluntly. And you know what? Unfortunately, the majority of this financial strain that we're facing today is, of course, the result of the mismanagement of the LDE, and I'll just be blunt. And that's, I mean, it's important that, and I know the, the calls, and we're talking hundreds, it's, it's not tens, it's hundreds of calls that we've, I'm sure we've all taken those calls, and as, as far as it goes for, you know, what are you doing? It's your fault, it's your fault, it's your fault, it's always our fault, Merry Christmas, have a nice day, thank you, and move on. Because you're not going to change anyone's mind. It's, it's the mayor's fault, and it's the council's fault, and it's our administration's fault. What I do know is that we've got a couple individuals at the end of this horseshoe that have, and their teams, I might add, that have put a shit ton of work in, I'll put it bluntly, over the last while. And, and what the community needs to, needs to understand is that it doesn't, it's, it's not easy. It's not easy, and I, and I know the amount of time, and we're sitting in here, and it's been, you know, over 12 hours, and, and it's, it's fine. We need to, we need to come to a conclusion here, but I, I just want to make sure the community understands the pressures that are, are on us, that were out of our control. And, and so it's, it's, it's not easy, and my, my thought is, is being a, a business owner, that we've got a few years to, I know, there's a lot of people saying, there's no way you can find efficiencies, you've got to cut, you've got to cut, you've got to cut, you've got to cut services. I'm still maybe on that, that faith of, we will find that, and, and we'll be able to find efficiencies. This is why we have incredible staff. Their job is to do exactly what we're asking and, and, and try their best. Not all the time they're going to come back, but this is, this is why we have the, the staff we do, because they can dig deep into their, into their departments. And, and I'm just talking about our senior staff, I'm talking about other managers to come forward and say, you know what, I can find cost savings in my department by running this. Now, to the tune of 4.1 million may be a little difficult, but you know what, every little amount counts. And when we're dealt a, a rough card, I just, I think it's important that we do all we possibly can to, to keep that, that taxation at a minimum. And, and to be quite blunt, balance the budget that we have, that we put out here years ago to be 5.1 for the next two years. And that's what I agreed to do when, when I was elected to balance a budget, and for that reason, I will vote in favor of this to keep the budget at what it currently is. So Counsel Crowson.
Thank you, Mayor Hagan. It's times like this when I'm reminded that politics is the art of the possible and the art of compromise. What I might, as an individual, choose to do isn't sometimes what's actually going to happen, because I don't get to do anything without four friends who all agree. So as I was looking at the options, I know what option, like, in my heart is the one I, if I had, was individually running this, I would go to. But what's more important is what option do I think five of us will go with in order to keep the exhibition and to keep moving on? Because as I talk to members of the public, not all, but the vast majority, when I say, we're facing this hard decision, what do you want? They said, in the end, you've got to save it. In the end, we need it for what it offers, what its events are, its role in the agriculture community, you've got to save it. And I think, listening to my colleagues, overhearing what people are thinking and where people's minds are, while I might have chosen a different option, I think this is the one that will go ahead. It will save the building, it will give some sustaining funding for at least for the next couple of years, so that we're not continually going, are we going to save it or not? What are we going to do? And it will give two years of, it's there, let's just go work and do the stuff. So I will support this motion.